Eighth, 2023 Planning Board is calling it to order. Roll call, please.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is not here. Secretary is here. Board member Catalinato.
Present.
Board member Mutu.
Present.
Board member Neely.
Present.
Board member Fulham, I understand, is running late.
Right, correct. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dennis is coming? Was he not just late?
I thought he was coming. He's probably just late, caught in traffic or something.
Yes, County Road 39 going west just after Montauk Highway is shut down.
Is shut down?
Yeah.
Well, there was a fatality on...
That was during the night.
During the night.
Yeah, this was just kind of near the railroad tracks. I could see, because I came on Montauk Highway to Hampton Road, and when I looked to the right...
Welcome to summertime, New Hampshire. Any minutes, Gloria?
Yes, we have May 11th and May 25th.
May 11th and 25th. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Five in favor, two absent. Okay, so how do you want to move forward with this?
Do you want to just go in order?
Yeah.
I'm going to then, my second to last item is Joe Gaza and that Ofa map. I'm going to wait to the end with that.
To the end, right.
Yes, I'm going to do everything else.
How about Sabana Cottage? You want to start with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, good. So is our procedure that we get, the maps are up, and then you distribute the reports? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I do have extra maps if you can't see it on...
Oh, you have it on both, which is good.
Yeah, exactly as clear on these, then yeah.
Okay, great.
If you don't mind, that's the staff report first, and then this is the decision, if you don't mind.
Just drop one on Kate's.
I have, I'm leaving one on Dennis's. Dennis, just...
Okay, here's an extra.
Madam Chair, acknowledging Vice Chair Finity and Board Member Fulham are here.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Please, different reports.
And I never save one for myself, so there is...
Oh, there's an extra one, I think.
Would you like the other?
There's an extra one, Claire.
I'm so used to a package.
Oh, good, good.
Dennis, number one.
And there should be a resolution.
Staff report and resolution. And we're one shy.
Yeah, we could share, that's fine.
They're diverting traffic off by...
Well done.
By Blackman's Plumbing.
Yeah, well, I could see it. I thought it was by the railroad, because I came down 39 to Hampton Road.
Yeah.
That had 39.
It could have been by the railroad, because everything was being diverted over to Blackman's. Really mess.
Okay, so Claire, Sabana Cottage LLC?
Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward site plan.
It's a draft, draft report?
Yes, it's a draft report and a draft resolution for your consideration.
Okay.
The deadline's not to the next agenda, but I thought it was pretty simple. We could go through it, and if you have any questions for the applicant, we could always pause that. So I'll go through the staff report briefly, but just some background here. It's a house currently. They're going to demolish the house and build a...
Is this next to all those little cottages?
It's across the street from the cottages. Can you see that on the aerial? The cottages are across the street, and then this is the backside of that Rocco, I think it's Rocco, construction offices on County Road 39. This is the trial piece. This is Shrubland here, and then this is the one with the t-shirt shop in it.
Oh, okay.
And then this is a house currently, but it's zoned HB, and it is allowed to have a special trade contractor use on the property.
Just tell me, north or south side of the road?
South side of Shrubland.
Okay.
So this is where all the traffic stacks up, 3:00 in the afternoon, waiting to turn right on County Road 39, so...
The motel is just to the right?
To the east, yeah.
I forget which one it's to the east.
It's, yeah, I forget which one it's called, or what it's called now. It may be changed. But yeah, the hotel's to the east. We did talk about cross-access here, which is one of the bigger issues. I'm asking for like a general cross-access on this piece, just in this area, if that makes sense, on the south side.
Do we have a plan that we can draw, just a sketch?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
As you know, the traffic westbound in the afternoon backs up on Shrubland Road.
Yep.
And people have been using those, yeah, those site plans, motel, to cut through...
To for cut-throughs, yeah.
To, so they, to beat the queue.
Mm-hmm.
Make that right, so...
I think not to put it in now, but to do a future. What do you think?
Yeah.
Okay, so a future to the south. Do you want anything to the east? I guess we could possibly do east, too.
Do we have any connections in place on either side?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, none of these site plans have any of those approvals. So I looked, I looked at the site plan here, and didn't see anything, and there's not been any activity in the motel. So I'm recommending the general cross-access, which we could do on all three sides, if you think that makes sense, but I know there's like a little bit of...
Two sides, no?
It would take a lot of thought about implementing them, because there are a lot of cut-through issues.
Right, exactly.
Certainly having them on paper, or having the right to implement it would make sense.
Yes, exactly. Whether it makes sense to actually implement it is something you have to study, I think.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. But they've talked about it the whole time. They're aware of the cross-access, yeah.
Okay.
Okay? So I'll go through the report pretty quickly. The square footage is, I actually have to adjust in the staff report. It's 4,130 square feet, not 4,090 square feet, as noted. The size of the lot is 19,800 square feet. It's pre-existing, non-conforming. It's located in the New York State archeologically sensitive area, and there was an archeological report that was secured at the time of completeness. It was a type-two action. Public hearing was April 27th, and there was no comments from the public during the hearing, nor during the ten-year comment period. Fire prevention, had no special concerns, but they do have to comply with the requirements. Architectural Review Board, they indicated approval for the project with the condition that a landscape plan be submitted to the ARB. And I do have a copy of an amended landscape plan, if you want to take a look at it.
Do we have renderings of this, what it's going to look like?
Of the building, yeah, the elevations, yes. Let's see what I have in the computer. Open this up.
And all we ask for is elevations, right? We do not require renderings or digital versions, the way some other towns do?
We only ask for elevations, except if you have a special concern and you...
Of what it's going to look like?
Yes, exactly.
Well, we might want to look at that down the road at some point.
Of putting that as a requirement for site plans?
Everything's digital now, I think.
Everything's digital?
Yeah.
There we go. This is the floor plans. This is the elevations. Can you see that?
So they're two twin, twin houses?
They are. This is, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. So this is the north side. This is what's facing the residential uses. I do think that maybe, at least on this side, some shutters would be in order, and that's my recommendation.
Something.
Yeah, this, the metal roofing, and then it's metal siding, panels on the wall, so...
Yeah, it needs something to soften it up.
Window boxes.
Yeah, exactly. Window boxes, yeah, exactly.
Shadows, yeah.
Yeah, I thought shadows would be appropriate.
Yeah. So this, where is it sitting on the, on the plan?
Yeah, let me show you on the site plan.
Because it says two, oh, a two-story building, so that's one building.
One building. So this is the site plan. This is Shrubland Road, so there is, it is residential. I'll zoom back into the, but it is residentially zoned there, and so I think having this space be dressed up with the shutters, I'm not that concerned about the other side, but it's up to the planning board.
Well, having the access with the trucks and everything on the other side is a benefit to the houses across the street?
Yes, yes, they designed it correctly that way, yeah.
Do you have a street view of the hotel? Because I think there's screening along there, so I don't know, you know, you could either address the architecture or required to be screened, which might address the noise of trucks and things like that.
So I do have, here, go back to the aerial. Do you think there's screening this way?
Does IT have this digitally, the street thing that we look at sometimes at the agenda meeting?
Yeah, I can look that up, just one second. So it's 28 Shrubland Road, right?
Yes.
You're using all the capabilities of GIS right now. So there is that. So the street scape from the motel?
Well, just along that road, yeah, there's screening on Shrubland.
So if I click here, would that be good? If you want to see that view? Okay. Google Street View. That's the motel there.
Okay.
So that, that's the motel entrance.
And then what's to the left of that?
And then this would be going this way.
Yeah, so what's to...
I think I can zoom in there that way, so, and then this is the property, I think.
Maybe we can zoom out?
Yes, this is it, yeah. So we'll zoom out a little bit.
I'll still be...
So that's the house.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they'll tear that down?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And the building's going, looks like in the same place, more or less?
In a similar place, yeah, exactly. I do have an existing conditions map, too, shows where the thing is. But you can see from the aerial approximately where the house is.
So are we looking at it because it's zoned Highway HB, or it's a single building, right?
It's a single commercial building for a single use, yes.
A commercial building?
Yeah, for a special trade contractor, which is why I had to go to the special exception.
Special exception, so this is special exception?
Yeah.
Okay. So the reason why I was asking that was, you know, the issue at hand is blending it with the residential neighborhood, so what's the board's opinion or track record on that? You know, do you dress up the building, or do you require it to be screened along the Shrubland Road, along the residential border?
I think we usually do both.
How's that been handled in the past?
Yeah, this is the latest landscape plan, so if you want to share, if you'd like to look at that.
Thanks, Claire.
Thanks. So yeah, I recommend some additional landscaping, maybe some other faces. So two, I saw two trees, I think, right?
There are two trees directly in front of the house. Any low bushes at all?
So they're doing it against the building itself, which I do think is helpful, but I do recommend that they incorporate evergreens right in front of the parking lot, up four foot tall, so that's one of my recommendations. That's just to screen, the cars parked there. But additional screening in the fronts, it's going to have a lawn appearance, of course, going down.
They're also showing a line of privet. Is that to be, is that proposed along Shrubland Road?
Oh, is it true?
Yeah, it says proposed.
Along the entire...
Is that privet?
Proposed privet, four foot.
Privet has four feet high along here.
Oh, great.
As well as landscaping in front of the parking lot.
Good, yeah, I think that works.
So it seems fairly accurate, and I think the site plan showed a future access, cross-access in principle.
Right, yeah, so I think we want to show that, just as an example, but get it general.
But I think the site plan, you had that before. I saw two lines there.
Did you see that?
But I couldn't see, I couldn't read it from here.
It does, it shows that right there. I don't know if you want it specifically in that area, or do you want it...
For the future cross-access, in this area, here, one way, to come in to the property, not go...
Is that in the back?
No, this is, this is, this is the property adjacent to County Road 39.
This is County Road 39.
So it has a future access, entering only, not coming back out.
Not coming back out. It'll be right here.
It'll be here.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's shown there, too, yeah, that's what you saw.
Okay. We interrupted your report.
No, not at all. So do you want to leave it more general, or do you want them to leave it, the notes, as it is right there, like...
Maybe we should say something about it.
Okay.
That once it's designed, or once we have further input or further development.
Yeah.
I mean, something like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and the cross-access section, okay.
Yeah.
And we could leave that, you want them just to leave that like that, or do you want them to take out the one-way only? Because I think it kind of binds you, though.
It does.
It does.
Yeah.
Because I think you may need access coming in, so just we have to control, you know, access on the County Road 39.
Yeah.
We may need it through the front.
Yeah, you don't know, yeah.
We just don't know.
We don't know. It depends on the development next door.
I think, yeah.
So I want to say proposed...
Cross-access conditioned upon...
Future review by the planning board and implementation.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, how that is the condition. Okay, good.
So are we going through the special exceptions part?
Yeah, so I didn't identify anything significant. Town engineer has approved it, gone back, county planning commission had no special concerns. I went through all the standards and identified no special concerns, they're meeting their parking requirements. So that's the special exception standards, A through M, and there's no specific standards. Do you want me to go through them, or...
Do we, do we address the special exception standard that allows them to put a commercial property in a zone?
Yes, so that is number, so A says about the use of special trade contractors, no definition, but the description is appropriate for the property, and it's permitted.
Is that 333?
That's special exception standard A.
Right, but you refer to 330-3.
Correct.
So we have to look it up to find out what it is, right?
No, that is the standard. You look at 330-3, and you say, do you meet the general intent of zoning? And that's the standard, that the use is appropriate for the zone in HB. That is what your, the standards being met. Is that what you wanted to talk about? And then C talks about, is it appropriate for this district, even if it's next to a different district? And so that's where transition zone setbacks come in and such.
You have R40, is that crossed out? No.
R40 is to the north, so across the streets... Across Shrubland is R40.
And that's where the motel, the cottages?
No, there's like cottages?
Yeah.
Yeah, the cottage, I don't think that's the motel, right?
I misspoke.
Yeah, 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 the motel's to the east.
And so, so they're, so it's residential across the street?
It is residential across the street, yes, that's it.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's, they have signs for summer rentals with kayaks and so, it's, it's more motel-like.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that people live there year-round.
Okay, yeah, I don't know either.
I mean, I use that road all the time, so...
I think the rest, the other property, though, the one to, the west, just want to look at the aerial again, is a house, right? This one's a house itself, and then this one's the one with the cottage.
There are some houses on the north side.
And then there's houses going west on there.
Yeah, until you get to where the road, the land is too narrow because of the pond.
Is that all R40 across the street?
It is, yeah.
Not HB?
Not, highway business, no. But I double-checked 1970 master plan, and the 1999 comprehensive plan, and the corridor plan, all had this remaining as HB, and no changes, so...
Well, that was my question about the zoning.
Yeah. Yep, so I go through those standards when we talk about compliance with the master plan, which is D, standard D. Do you want me to go through them all? I can do that, if you want.
Any, anybody have any questions about any of them?
Yeah, I mean, regardless of the fact that there's a house there now, there's, there's commercial all around it.
It is, yeah.
So it's the same owner? I mean, that we know of, it's their property, they're tearing it down, and they're building a new building?
Yes.
Okay.
I also do go through the site plan standards, too, so you want me to go through those?
Mm-hmm, I have to do that.
So again, I do say addressed above a lot, because A, traffic access and interior circulation, that's been addressed above in the standards for parking and access. Landscape, you know, we did speak of, so I think you're fine with the landscape plan as it is, right? With just maybe that one change to the four feet?
Did you have a comment on evergreen?
Well, yeah, privet, privet will only have leaves on it by part of the year, so it would be more appropriate to have an evergreen hedged there as opposed to privet.
I think they were going for to make it like residential appearing at first, which is privet, obviously, you see privet all around.
Yeah.
But either way, I think it works, yeah. What do you think?
Yeah, there are a lot of residences that now don't want to pay to cut privet two or three times a year, put in evergreen.
Yeah, true. So we think more appropriate to be like a suggestion of evergreen?
A low shrub evergreen. Holly gets tall.
Holly gets eaten by the deer, despite the fact that they shouldn't eat it.
We'll recommend something from our list that's low, a low evergreen.
Well, privet's going to be, I think the intention of privet, I'm sorry, did you know the height of it?
I think it's had four feet to start.
With the little pieces stick out.
But four feet does shed, and then you have to, it's maintenance.
Minimum four feet.
Minimum four feet.
Minimum four feet. So do you want to say like an arborvitae or something?
They're suggesting privet. Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to?
Because it is not green in the wintertime.
Oh, it's not?
It's going to lose all of its leaves. Jeff have an idea? He's a plant guy.
Well, I don't think we want to go native. I think we want to make it like, you know, cedars don't really...
Well, how would the deer with arborvitae?
They love it, they love it.
They love it, too.
They love everything.
Are we setting it up to get eaten from below?
Well, I have holly and arborvitae, and the deer eat everything else but those, too.
You're very lucky.
Yeah, arborvitae's not their favorite.
It's like candles.
A lot of people are now planting the green giants, arborvitae, and those, the deer don't eat.
They do eat them.
I have it in my yard.
I have it in my yard, too.
You can spray them, though.
Well, that's, you see them all sprayed on the bottom.
No, once a year.
I'm not a plant witch, but I have them in my front yard.
Yeah, I mean, I think like the intent of this board is just to have it be screened from the residential area year-round, so if they update the plan. I mean, I don't know that we need to suggest what would go there, just that some type of evergreen, that whatever landscaper is putting together the plan could probably evaluate, you know, what's appropriate.
Yeah, we can give it open to evergreens, four foot tall or higher, right?
Yeah, minimum four feet, yeah.
Minimum four feet, evergreen of your, of their choice, yeah, that's fine.
For year-round screening, so there's a reason why we're opted out of privet.
So the cross-access, they'll require approval by the neighbor to the south as well, yeah?
Right, so we don't have that. That's why it's going to be a future cross-access covenant. And then in the future, when and if this, the one to the south comes in, then we have that ability to do that. And then I think we're going to leave it for the east, too, because the motel could always change, too. So it might be better to have like a coordination of the three sites.
Claire, are they moving the curb cut like 30 feet west, or is that just...
Oh, yeah, they're definitely moving the curb cut, so it's highway approval on that. So I believe they're coming in like here now, so we can just take a peek at that.
Claire, I also have a setback question.
Yeah.
The side yard setback.
Uh-huh. Yep.
I have a second question.
It shows right on the site.
I want to look at 13.2. That is the, you can keep the existing setback, because they have a house that's that far. They can keep that setback. It's pre-existing.
So if they're going to move the curb cut, I think I remember somewhere in the access management plan, it talked about recommended spacing, separations for driveways. Just would want to make sure that, because it's getting closer now to the radio TV repair or the t-shirt place.
This one.
Yeah, just make sure those two, and that is a busy section of road there. Just want to make sure we're not going to have an issue with that.
You don't remember what it was, the setback was?
Don't remember offhand. I want to say 200 feet, but I'm guessing, it might have been 100 feet, you know. We'd have to go back and look at that.
It probably wouldn't be, right?
200 feet, it would be too close. 100 feet, it might be okay. I just remember that was in the Dunn Engineering Recommendations.
Okay, for the corridor management plan, right? The corridor management plan?
Right, the access management was folded into that, yeah.
What is that property between this applicant and the motel? That, with a close setback, side yard setback?
I'm sorry, which property?
Between the, what we're looking at, and what's to there?
This is the motel, and then the property is the south? Is that what you're asking?
Okay, I thought, okay, so that's the motel.
This is the motel to the east.
South is wealth management, right? Carrero, wealth management.
Yeah, okay, yes, that's what it is, yeah.
So Claire, they're building a 4,090 square foot house, replacing a house that's there. Do they indicate what square footage that is? In other words, is this double what square footage?
Oh, no, they don't indicate how big the house is, no.
The house is non-conforming.
The house is not non-conforming. It's just, if you wanted to do a new one, you couldn't do one, right? But pre-existing houses are permitted, actually.
Oh, they are?
They are, so they are not considered a pre-existing non-conforming use in HB. It's a little bit different than, you know, usual. But if you tried to put a new one on, then that's what, would it be non-conforming? Yeah.
So lot coverage and all of that is okay, right?
Lot coverage is okay, yes, less than the 30% lot coverage for buildings, yep. Okay, so, no natural features, town engineers indicate approval, the lighting conforms to the town code, I reviewed it, ARB indicated their approval, and then I said consider the addition of shutters on the north side, and then note the color and material on the building elevations. There's going to be an IA system, no public address system. They have, here they have parking spaces required. I do say consider solar, but I haven't received any comments on that. I do say consider solar, but I haven't received any comments on that. Do we want to do a charging station?
You basically said charging and solar. I, in your notes, you said a charging station.
Mm-hmm, does he think that's appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay. Just for the, like, the ability to have cha, I mean, there's like levels of requiring these things, having an installed charging station or just maybe the ability to put one in, I mean, I don't know what's your level on these things.
The more, the better.
So just one, right?
Oh, no, that's, yeah.
Yeah, and if they come back, we'll let them know, okay, great. And then the general cross-access easement agreement to the east and south and west?
Sure.
Okay. And then I'm gonna have them change the note on the plan.
Now, on the elevations, have they specified, is it a shingle, shingle house?
No, this proposed building is metal siding.
Metal siding.
Mm-hmm.
Are we asking for cross-access to the motel side?
Yes.
Where would that go on the site plan? We have a, the only place it could go is where the dumpster is, is proposed to be located.
Yeah, exactly.
From a practical point of view, is that likely to really make sense?
It could go where those two parking spaces is too, right? The six and seven, they could go through there, right?
Or they can move their dumpster to the parking spaces, but it's all just how it could be addressed in the future, right?
Right.
Right, it's to be determined.
Right. But I think it just gives us a tool, but yeah, logistically, sometimes it's, you were designing a lot when you do these and implement them, so.
So it's an all-metal building with a metal roof and metal windows, and we're gonna ask now for shutters, we're recommending shutters. They can't be wood shutters, right? They have to, everything is metal here.
Yeah, they have, they have metal, yeah, composite material.
What's the threshold for an ARB referral?
Yeah, the ARB, you know, there are no referrals ever attached to these, I thought we were gonna get, not incorporated, but not attached.
The, that's their comments.
Yeah, that's their comments, they're in there.
That they approved it subject to looking at the landscape plan, they saw the landscape plan, they approved the landscape plan. And I recommend that the signage be reviewed by the planning board because it's residential area across the street. I thought that we want.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
So I incorporate those into conditions, and I'll tell you what my additional conditions will be. So the changes, all changes, modifications will be on the site plan, compliance with public safety, department comments, indicate the evergreen plantings adjacent to the parking spaces shall be increased to a minimum height of four foot tall. I want red cedars around the dumpster, minimum of six foot tall. And we'll add the privet changing to an evergreen, a minimum of four foot tall. And the change to the note regarding the cross-access.
So they need a permit from the highway department for the curb cut, right?
Yes, they will. And then I'm going to also, so they're adding the shutters, they're noting the colors of the materials on the elevations, and there was no other changes to the elevations, right?
But where do you put the, the charging station?
Oh, charging station, I forgot something.
And I would put in consider solar, even.
I'm sorry, what?
Consider solar.
Oh, yeah, as a general condition?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, why not?
We should just make that one of the, our general, our general standard requests.
I have language somewhere.
Do you? Maybe you can share it with Claire, it should be, but it should be.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it just seems like if we have, we don't have the zoning that on the fourth code to say we, they have to do it, but let's get people starting to think about it so that it becomes more SOP rather than we build it, we build this little tin box with no insulation and then it's, you know, it's an energy guzzler.
Good. That's good.
I'm blooming, I wasn't that bad at home, but I get me here, I guess.
Yeah, no, I've been, I've gone through boxes of tissues, yeah. Okay, anything else, Claire, any other clarifications?
Um, yes, I'm just going to say, yeah, the standard other conditions, the submission for future cross-access easement agreement to the west, south, and east. And then a maintenance bond for the landscape plan, other, everything else is standard. Okay. Thank you, sorry to add one more thing. The comment that Tom made, do you want to just put it in the conditions that they have to double-check the access plan? Yeah, I don't, I mean, there, are they, is that a recommendation in the access management plan?
I know there was, yeah, I think it was, you know, recommended, but it also may just be a long thirty-nine. I don't know whether it covers shrubbing.
Okay, okay, right.
Might be more for guidance than.
Okay, so I'm gonna say, I'm gonna verify, I'm gonna verify it, but I want to say something about, maybe I should just do this. Let me, let me do it.
Think about, just, and we talked about before, when you have driveways very close together, you have, you know.
So is your intention, you want us to pass this today, or are you gonna give us a revised?
I can revise it, adopt it next week. So that's good?
Yes.
Then I, yeah, no, next week's, next meeting. Actually, I'll, I can do that, and then I'll double-check the access thing, that way we'll be cleaner.
Thank you, Claire.
You're welcome, no problem.
American Legion?
Yes.
So no action?
No action.
And this too is action deadline next session, so.
This time I'm gonna hold one back for myself.
They're closing it to one of these plans.
Okay, it's for Christine if she ever wants to.
Is Christine Getway?
Of course she does.
I'm just gonna put a big copy here for you to look at too. So American Legion is in Hampton Bays, they're doing a small addition on the, would be the south side of the existing first main building in the front for basically.
An elevator.
Elevator ADA access, yeah, and some storage and things like that, but basically it's a good, it's good use or addition to the property. So when you initially reviewed it, because of the small nature, you waived the public hearing, did small amount of referrals, and so I was prepared to do a decision, but then I looked at the site plan and you can see it, I also didn't notice what, an area that they've been informally using as parking, they really want, they, they propose a big parking lot for, and that I didn't really pick up on, their application didn't speak of it. So I'm gonna go forward and approve this portion of it so they can get their building permit started and start the work, but I'm going to hold off on this. There's a couple issues here, one is it's residentially zoned, so there's not the setback that you have between commercial and a, and a residential zone, you get like a fifty-foot setback and then you could put landscaping in. Here they're putting their parking lot right up against these property lines and their residential properties. I just think it's, I'm borderline like the public hearing, because it's just a lot more intense than overflow parking once in a while, you know?
How many parking spaces do they, are they indicating?
They're indicating a lot, which the use is there and generating now, and I'm not saying SECR or anything like that in terms of environmental review, but it is a big formalization of this use here.
Is it already paved?
No, it's all grass.
And are they planning to pave it, because I, it looks like they're striping it.
Asphalt.
That's, well, that also is an environmental issue, because now it's not, you're gonna have runoff.
Right, and so you'd want the drainage to be shown, and they have shown some curb information, but no drainage, no, none of that, and so.
They should treat this as a regular site plan.
That's, it's, this is big.
How do you even do this on a residential lot?
You can't, so the use is permitted, the use is permitted, it's not, that's not the issue, they're not adding another use, they're just continuing this use, and you can see from the grass being pretty much dead, they use this, there's no doubt. But I feel it's a little bit of intensification in terms of not establishing a setback from these residential uses.
The neighbors might not react well to it.
Right, exactly, yeah, and, and they weren't thinking, you know, I don't think it was intentional, they just, you know, they were doing this.
But I know that the hole that they have there is rented out for events, and it's a pretty big hole at a little level, so, you know, they can have a lot of people there for events, so, I mean, we should really be protecting the residents around them like we do, you know, for anything like this. Would they have any, would they have any issues there with lot coverage if they paved all of that?
No, it's not, there's no, we don't have lot coverage like that except for in our HO and HC zoning districts, so because it's residential, it doesn't have a restriction like that, but no doubt it has to be reviewed, I think, to the fullest in that respect. So I recommend actually deeming incomplete because the setbacks aren't being met for the parking lot. Then come back with a conforming plan that we would then put through a site plan process with a public hearing.
So we're phasing it then?
Yes.
You want to phase it?
I do want to phase it.
You'll let them get, progress with the.
With the small addition.
With the small addition, so I wrote this decision saying that, I put the three referral agencies, including landmarks, came back because the building is older than seventy-five years and they, they had no issues with the addition. So I am letting them go forward with that, and maybe just hold off on the landscaping issue when we do the full site plan, right?
That makes sense.
Landscaping. My only thing, condition would be to bring it into conformance with some lighting if they do look for CO before we're complete with this process, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so I'm recommending, so I'm gonna have that finding that it be deemed to complete because it doesn't meet setbacks, and then they can proceed with a full site plan application for the parking lot when they want to proceed for that.
So you'll indicate what phase one is and what phase two is?
Yeah, so phase one would be the addition for the building, and maybe the handicap spaces that are immediately adjacent to them.
And phase two is the parking lot?
It is the entire rest of the parking lots and its improvements.
Lighting, et cetera.
And lighting, and then landscaping like that.
Claire, this rezone, in the beginning of the be resolved clauses, elevation and there's a blank?
Yep, I need to fill that in with this information.
And there's a bunch of question marks elsewhere.
Yep.
Right, so this is addressed.
So the elevations are referring to this set of plans, and this set of plans will A, indicate the vehicle protection for the generator and the propane tanks, which is the fire marshal comments, but B is gonna say remove the parking lot from this plan, and that's the plan we're going to stamp approve for them.
Okay.
I think they own the lot to the south as well.
Oh, they do.
So that's interesting, maybe there's a cross-access opportunity, they could use overflow parking.
Want to pull it up on GIS and we'll see? Do they? That's a, that's the, that's a daycare, it used to be a daycare, but.
You have to, I'm sorry, you have to be Legion Hall, and then there is that property right there, which is a house, and they have that very nice memorial at the front, which I don't know how they got that in place.
Oh, that was.
I did that.
This is a house?
Yeah, it's a.
Oh, they just say building on their site plan.
Okay, so they have a bill, it's a bill.
Yeah, it's a small, it's small.
I, my memory says it was like a house, but it could be.
Yeah, it could be, it could be.
Can you just check and see if there is?
It looks like it.
If they do own that stuff.
Oh, for cross-access opportunities here? Yeah, so this was a daycare center that the planning board approved.
Very familiar with that daycare center.
Oh, yeah, they used it. I thought it was, it's bug, gotta be like fifteen years ago now at this point, so there might be cross-access, yeah, I'm not quite sure, is advantage to have cross-access in Quahog?
Well, just thinking if.
Is it still a daycare?
It's not.
It's not a daycare center?
It's not a daycare.
Mm-mm.
Daycare center.
Daycare.
Is it just vacant?
They redid the exterior, I'm not sure what's in there, there's no signage or anything, but I know that they used to own it, and if, we didn't want to have that much lot coverage, because, you know, like, we did a Little League fundraiser in the American Legion, and I think the addition is great, because my friend was actually carried down in her wheelchair downstairs to get to the fundraiser, so it's needed, but the parking is a little unsafe the way that it's configured and obviously doesn't meet the setback, so if they do own that property, there's an opportunity for overflow parking and then reduce the coverage on the lot if there's cross-access there.
Right, well, this is owned by American Legion, obviously, the main lot, this one's owned by Ministerio Restaurant.
Okay, so maybe they, does it say the year sold?
I can check that, just one second. Record card, twenty twenty-one?
Okay, yeah.
I'm not quite sure, does that indicate a church?
Someone's inquired to me about that for.
A church?
At one point, yeah.
For a church?
Kind of sounds like that, right?
Right, but if they, so again, like, if the uses were opposite timeframes, like, the Legion would be an evening typically, and there could be cross-access, there could be overflow parking on the off-hours and not have as much lot coverage for the Legion if there was an opening there.
Yeah, that's, I think that's worth asking the Legion to reach out to the neighbors, because I think it benefits both of them.
So code, but code requires what, eighty percent parking on your own property and then, I think it's twenty percent? We went through this with a restaurant in Marina in Quahog.
Two-thirds on your own property.
Two-thirds on your own property and then one-third, no more than one-third off.
Okay.
In certain zones.
In certain zones, and this was RWB that I was referring to.
Yeah, this is residential.
This is, yeah.
You could do shared parking in any zone, I don't think it's just commercial.
I don't think so.
Oh, let me double-check.
Yeah.
Well, this is for second phase, right?
Yeah.
This is second phase.
Right, yeah.
So, it doesn't hurt to ask, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it would be great to organize the parking, if it was overflow to the other lot, that's great to keep the setback and then, you know, keep the buffer against the memorial area, you know, like, plant that out a little bit more versus using it for parking.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense, okay. So I'll let them know those are some questions you have for the second phase, and obviously if it is, this is no longer daycare and they want to come in for a church use, you'd see that too, so, as a process.
All right, Claire, so no action now, you'll write it up with all the changes, right?
I can do, I don't know, I'm prepared to, to do this, because it's just deeming the second phase incomplete, and then the first phase has the conditions.
Are you spelling out the phases here?
The fake, I say that this is for the seven hundred and sixty square foot addition only to the existing main hall.
Can we refer to it as phases so that we don't get completely mis.
As phase one.
Well, when the plans get signed, Gloria, you could just verify that the parking lot's removed and everything.
I will.
Well, you'll do it, right?
Yeah, I, a hundred percent.
Obviously, she's gonna sign it then and see, yeah.
Yeah, any condition you have is verified by me that it's done.
Right, yeah, so that's the fail-safe.
So what, what language are you putting in here?
So number one, number one A stays, the second one is the removal of the parking lot from the site plan to be.
B?
That's B.
One B.
And then two A stays the same, and three A and B stay the same, and four A stays the same, which is the lighting, and then I have a second resolve that the parking lot portion shall be deemed incompletes, because it does not conform to zoning, and.
So the parking lot portion, phase two?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to indicate that? And what about landscaping? You have a question mark next to landscaping?
Well, you're not, you're gonna hold off on that, right?
You're taking that, you're taking that out, okay.
And, oh, you indicated a full site plan review, right? Subject to full site plan review. With hearing.
Any other questions or comments?
Great.
So we want to move this?
I'll move it.
Moved by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
No subvention, seven in favor. Great, three, five more to talk, Claire?
I'm sure. This is the decision. This is the decision.
So today is the action deadline.
Today is the action deadline. I'm going to print out the staff report for me for three five. Thanks.
I, I printed out one myself, Claire. Do you need it?
Uh, he's just going to print out the, you printed from the packet?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's a fresher version. It's coming. Um, I can pull it up though. So I'll just go through, I'll just go through.
Go right to the fireman.
Um, but if you want to stop me if anything you don't, you don't see, we'll still read through this. It is a site plan application for the enclosure of the front open carport, two thousand one hundred and sixty-five square feet to increase the area of the showroom for a total of thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-five square feet. Building for a motor vehicle dealer, two point two acres and thirty-five Montauk Highway and Watermill. And so I do have site plans too. Do you want to have a set of site plans to look at? It's a site plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think your staff report covered the glass and the glare and the lights and that, I mean, that was, I think, the biggest part of our.
That was an issue.
That was a big issue, yeah. And I do want to show you the elevations.
And I said to you earlier, Claire, I'm sorry that we didn't request a rendering of this. What it's really going to look like.
Right.
So I just sort of underscore that again, that that might be a requirement.
Mm-hmm.
Looks very different sometimes on elevations.
Right. Um, so secret wise, uh, it is an unlisted action. The planning board issued a major declaration December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Public hearing was waived on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and no comments were received during the provided thirty-day written comment period. Um, the fire marshal, he had comments related to the fire lane and fire zones for parking. I think over the years, they've been eliminated. And so he has many comments about where the parking shall go. And they have plenty of parking. There's cross-access here that's formalized between the three sites. So if they lose a couple of spaces to plan a fire zone, that's a issue here.
So they have to incorporate this into a revised site plan?
Yes, so that'll be double checked. So in this case, I'm probably going to refer to the fire marshal before a final sign-off. It makes sense. Um. I'm actually going to write that down.
And they want the following signs, right?
Right.
Fire zone, no parking, stop and standing. Does that two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar fine?
Yeah, if you park in a fire zone.
They should take off the other zeros in that necessary. Otherwise, people read it as two hundred and fifty thousand. Maybe they won't park if they think it's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Not if I think it's two, two dollars and fifty cents.
So they have to be addressed. The town architectural review board, um.
They also have a dumpster comment?
Yes, and so I do include that indicates, uh, are we looking, are we looking at the staff report?
That, nobody has the.
No, neither of us have it.
That's being, and being printed currently.
Yeah.
I didn't print enough, I didn't kill enough trees today for you, so.
Jeff is getting it.
But we'd be happy to use laptops if they worked.
I know, exactly. But, so I'm reading it, but as soon as it comes, we can, you know. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Man of the hour.
Exactly. Say you do. I do.
I printed my own, but not that big of a.
We have enough for everybody?
I got a new router and I set up my printer.
You're good?
And the office computer, yes. And now I can't print again. And everything looks like it should be set. It's fine, but it won't print.
That is funny.
It can't find the printer.
Did you add it to? I mean, there's, did you add it to?
And I go to the printer, it, it recognizes the new router.
Which is some very simple thing, Gloria.
Very.
So the comment about the dumpster, I started to incorporate it into the general conditions of the approval, but I'm going to have it as a, indicate the dumpster and show the screening around it as changes to the site plan. Uh, the town engineer, I'm sorry, town architectural review board indicated approval with the caveat that the signage be separately reviewed.
Now, did they, I'm going back to this about what it's going to really look like. What did they approve?
They approved.
And if from an elevation?
That, those are the elevations in front of you, yeah.
They didn't ask for samples of the material, what the glass is, is it tinted, whatever? They didn't do, look at any of that? That's disappointing.
How do we modify that? Just make a?
Well, you, I mean.
To the town board?
No, you.
You can do that.
You wire it?
No, we can look at the architecture. And we also have a right to say we want this in the architecture of that. But again, we don't have any renderings. We have just elevations and that's not sufficient.
So can we require renderings or does that require a change?
We're going to require renderings.
Any additions to a commercial building will require one, renderings. Not just elevations, but renderings.
But renderings is, is right.
Like Tesla submitted renderings.
Yes, full color renderings. It was great.
You know, it's going to be reviewed tonight, but that's.
Yeah.
That's one, that's one. You actually said that in your pre-submission report.
Okay, so we need to, to do that.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Okay.
SOP. A picture is worth a thousand words.
Isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
So we're not surprised when it gets built and done and think, did I, did I approve that?
Exactly, exactly. Um, the town engineer didn't have many comments except for he didn't mention this concrete washout area. So I'm going to have that as a condition of, a general condition of the approval. And the CAC had comments. Do you want me to read them to the record?
Yeah, they're quite good.
Existing building is currently two thousand, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty, oh, three hundred and seventy-five square feet on two point two acres. Enclosing the existing carport brings the building to over thirty thousand square feet. What is the need for this car dealership to be twice as large as current zoning allows? The Tesla application is nineteen thousand on two point nine acres. Over the years, several proposals for the Tesla property have been presented that required the building to be made larger and CAC has always objected. With the enclosure of the carport, how will circulation be affected? The carport and the front area of the property currently serves as a sort of pass-through between the two curb cuts and allows cars to enter and exit without issue. In addition to circulation, with the carport enclosed, how will parking for the showroom and drop-off for service be addressed? What is the plan for where and how display cars will be placed in front of the property? There are currently no sidewalks in front of this property and should be required. Is there a plan to formally connect this building to the current BMW dealership on County Road thirty-nine? No color renderings were provided for the newly proposed facade, so it's difficult to comment.
They agree with us?
For example, how much glass will be on the facade and how will interior lighting be handled at night? Interior lighting at car dealerships has been an ongoing.
Issue.
Issue. So how will this be addressed with the proposed building being so close to the highway? It'd be helpful to see renderings of all the elevations with landscaping, lighting, parking, display, sidewalks, signage, so we can comment.
So circuits and can we just look at the circulation?
Yeah.
So the carport and front area of the property currently serve as a sort of pass-through between the two curb cuts and allow cars to enter and exit.
There's still a driveway that's going to be maintained here, so I'm going to zoom into the area a little bit here.
So cars come in.
What, are they, are they signed that one's in and one's out or is it just, you can use whichever?
Yeah, these two curb cuts are full curb cuts.
So if you're coming west, you can certainly make a right-hand turn in.
Mm-hmm.
But you certainly can't go left anywhere from, if you're going east.
Can't.
Oh, yes.
So the, so the eastern, so the.
It's real easy because the traffic going east is at a standstill. So you block the westbound side until somebody gives you an opening.
There you go.
That's, that's the reality.
Become a cynic.
Gloria and driving method.
I'm driving here.
I like that.
So maybe we should mark on exit only, entrance and exit only. Exit and entrance only signs.
Are you pulling the street view?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Do you want, do you want to see the street view or just the aerial?
It's a very dodgy section right here. We've got such traffic backup and, right?
Lot of driveways cross from each other.
Really, really bad.
You can't make a left turn out of there.
You have a merge lane there. That's really.
Right, the merge lane is, you could get sandwiched or killed with a tractor trailer making, going east right at that corner, the Flying Point Road.
Yeah.
Do you have tractor trailers jumping off cars there as well? Is they on twenty-seven or they pull into there?
I think they pull in now.
They, this has great circulation because of the connection to the other car dealerships.
They do park on thirty-nine for those dealerships, but I don't think they do it.
Yeah.
Because there's.
You can't, there's no.
There's a turning lane.
Center turn.
You can't wait for the central lanes already and a couple of the other.
Claire, what's the size of the Mercedes on County Road thirty-nine?
Almost thirty thousand. It was originally fifteen, then they got another five added to make it twenty. Then they added, they enclosed the one end of it. That was another, it's about, close to thirty.
I don't know.
Not dissimilar to this. I mean, the difference with Tesla is it's really not a true car dealership showroom.
And it's a single product.
Yes.
It's a single car. Are you trying to pull up a something, Claire?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, do you want to see the Google Street View? You do, right?
I could have seen it if the traffic wasn't so heavy coming here.
Let's see if this works.
Can you press the box to make it full screen? That's great, thank you.
So that's the east, the westerly one, right?
There it is.
That is the westerly one, yeah.
Have fun tonight.
Hi.
Hey, Charles.
Are you running away, Charles?
Yeah.
Go hard, St. Louis.
We'll come with you.
So this, this circulation is still, so it's the enclosure of this, this portion. This is remaining.
Yeah, it's not, it's not adding to the, to the footprint of the building. It's just adding to the walls.
Yes, and that was your point when you reviewed this at your pre-submission is that this was an enclosure of an area that was already being used as display. And so this is not representative of an increase of the use.
But essentially, it becomes an increased building, you know?
The building, yes, which is why they went to the zoning board appeals and the, as to give a variance for the additional square footage on the property.
So the question I think really now is circulation, side parking, fire, signage, all of that, particularly because of where it's located.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have to be very careful.
They have to fully comply with the fire marshal, which is why we'd refer it back to them before signature.
Now, what about the sidewalk?
Yeah, there is no sidewalk. That would be a state matter though. And there was no response from the state when we referred it to them. Is there any?
Or because it's kept, because it's twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Did, we don't impose site plan sidewalks and others?
No, if this was a town road with the highway department, we'd refer to the highway department and like.
I thought, I thought we specified a sidewalk in front of the parish art museum and that's on the same road.
Is there a sidewalk in front of?
There is.
Yes, there is.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask. Is there any adjacent sidewalks that could be connected?
I thought, I thought the planning board.
But it's not adjacent. It's near.
Oh, that was a state.
It's near, okay.
Well, they're, they're the ones who require the turning lanes, which is what's in there too.
Well, we recommended deceleration lane there. But it came from, this recommendation came from the planning board. It would be nice to have a sidewalk here.
Could you show the aerial again, just to see how far it is?
There's a sidewalk on that new building, isn't it?
Yes, okay. Yeah, so it's just next door, so.
That's why CAC is, is asking about that.
Right. And if we, I don't know if we have the formal authority or if it's with the state, but if it's with the state, we should ask that they require that.
Right.
Go on record as asking for it if we don't have the right to do it ourselves.
Okay, so as a condition of approval, do you want a sidewalk?
Would be a good thing to have.
Is it a board of agreement?
Yeah, but how, what kind of language would be required there?
They'd have to indicate a sidewalk that would be subject to DOT review.
Yeah.
Makes ADA requirements standard, design requirements.
And where would you put that, Claire?
It would be a change to the site plan indicating the sidewalk.
I think it's important. I mean, it's a main corridor for the bus route, S ninety-two, right?
Right. And that's, you know, one of those situations with sidewalks, is you have to kind of fill them in as they come up.
There's a link to that probably to the west already, right?
Right. To the east, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we specified that, Claire, in that building.
I think the DOT would have, would have done that one.
Okay, we can change.
Did you say we haven't heard from them or?
No, no, there was a referral though.
I mean, but it could have been like whoever wanted that one, it's a new person now and they didn't, you know, look at it.
Just haven't responded.
I think we're catching something that's important that we should flip back to them.
Yes.
Sidewalk warriors.
A reminder and a request.
It's important.
So Claire, this side plan doesn't have any parking specifications on it. So it's hard to tell where they're going to put these vehicles.
Where the.
Yeah. I mean, right now, they put cars in the back. But is that a shared parking lot with the one that comes out on?
Yes, it is.
On thirty-nine?
The two sites are shared.
Right. But there's no indication on this site plan about any parking anywhere, so.
On that site plan? So you want the full, the full parking shown?
Because that has to do with traffic and circulation, right?
Yep.
The circulation was a question.
And the other thing is, Claire, why do you have that site plan that here it up?
Uh-huh.
The recommendations that the fire marshal made about abandoning some, abandoning some parking spaces into filings. Where exactly are they talking about? They said the northeast side of the building to remove.
Yes.
Along with parallel parking between cross-access to fifty-one Montauk Highway. They said parallel parking spaces on northeast side of building.
I would imagine they're this.
And they're parallel parking.
Yeah.
Is that northeast? Okay.
I think generally speaking, if this is north, the corner is north. So this would be the northeast, right?
Okay, so you've, you've been, so that's.
And that's where they've been parking cars, George.
Yeah, that, that's why I'm trying to figure out where exactly they're talking about. So that's good.
How many spots would be required for this?
For this use? This is subject to a site plan that was approved initially, oh gosh, for my time. And then it had an addition for the car wash not too long ago that the planning board looked at.
So was there a parking, parking specifics on that site plan?
There is, there is a parking specific plan. I pulled it because the fire marshal wanted it. So I copied it for him and he has that.
So we should have it.
But it should be shown. The compliant parking should be shown.
And they're also asking for parking spaces on the southwest property line, which I guess is where the carport is.
Mm-hmm.
To be removed and rooted to be designated as a fire. So they'll be, they'll be used, they'll be losing what looks like about eight to ten parking spaces from the site, right?
Yes, getting around, I think getting around.
I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure exactly where it is, but it could be there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm imagining it's getting around this carport because a fire truck.
Couldn't get around.
Couldn't get under the carports that's there.
But you can also get to the south side, to this side of the building.
Yeah.
Because of parking it.
So Claire, if. So Claire, if they're updating the site plan and the square footage of the building, are they subject to new parking requirements? Or does it hold from the prior approval?
It holds from the private approval pursuant to what the planning board said with that this is already an area that was already being used and so calculated already as part of, being part of the showroom and display. So there would be no additional parking generated from this use. However, they need to show that they were conforming to the original site plan. And that's the, that was part of the comment. So full, showing of the full parking on the property, where they're storing cars.
Complying with the Fire, with the Fire Marshal.
And comply with the Fire Marshal. That's, that's number one.
That's key. So the circulation, so if you come in the eastern driveway and come out on the western side, is there, is that path cleared? Is there, I mean, it shows nothing. Where am I? It shows nothing here, right? Oh, the carport overhang. So they can't get under that overhang, is that it?
A fire truck couldn't. And that's why they're asking for a fire lane on this side.
You can go on the right or next.
So a fire truck can get in, has to turn around and go back out. So that real, that fire lane is critical at it being to-
Well, also on the, on the other side of the building too, because, you know.
What are they, what, what are they gonna do here then?
That side of the building was on fire, then they shouldn't need access.
Take out, abandon the parking space and make it a filing.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's not just driving in and coming back out. They have to use apparatus around the building and keep it as a fire.
Okay.
Yeah.
They need people to access even smaller vehicles or-
Yeah.
So I think it would be good to show the turning radius, you know, illustrated onto that, you know, the parking and then the turning radius for, you know, a trailer or a fire truck, just so it's really clear to visualize that.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's gonna be gigantic tra-trailers going in with cars.
And granted, they do have the access, you know, with those other car dealerships for that type of use. But if that, you know, southwestern side of the building was on fire and a fire truck couldn't access that side, that's a safety issue for sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
They need to be parking the tractor trailer on 39 and driving through it.
So Claire, do you have all those changes?
I do.
And how are we going to incorporate them in this report?
So do you wanna see the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prior to signature?
Yes.
Then I'll have them submit a plan prior to signature for your review and approval.
Okay, and you'll revise all of this?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's gonna be subject to your review. So I'm gonna say submits a site plan indicating all the parking and the compliance with the Fire Marshal.
Right.
As soon as I get the plan, I'll refer to the Fire Marshal. His approval will happen prior to you seeing this. But that'll also include the turning, truck turning radius. Truck and fire truck turning radius. And, and then we'll have the other thing, the additional sidewalks. And they can talk to, come and talk to you about the sidewalks if they have any issues.
The, the site plan adjacent to that has sidewalks, so that would tell us whether it was required by our planning board
That's why I asked Claire to check.
Or the DOT.
I can easily check who required it, yeah.
And we have cross-access almost, right? In the rear?
We have cross-access in the rear. Yeah, it's connected to Audi, Audi too.
Is it functional?
Yeah.
You can drive right through.
You're gonna go right through.
And then you can come back down on 39?
Yeah.
You can go, you can go car shopping in several dealerships at the same time, right?
Exactly, yes.
They always balk about that for security, you know?
They do, but they don't, these entities don't seem to have a problem with it.
Okay, Claire.
Okay, so this is-
There's no action.
No action.
No, no, it hasn't actually done that. You're approving this, but you're coming back to look, you're coming back to look at the site plan prior to-
Will you send us a revised text then?
Yes, of course.
So that we can see all of our changes?
Yes.
Memorialized in approval?
Extension, so we can review the site plan here before we do.
Who, is anybody here for? Who is representing them?
Tara, Akimi.
And we can't get an extension till next, for two weeks?
I'm sorry, you indicated that it was not a big deal, the site plan, so.
Well, we also got a complete, sort of vacant, sort of, sort of a vacant site plan. Without parking.
Yeah.
And you have the Fire Marshal's critiques, so-
I mean, I think it's the Fire Marshal's critique that really raised the site plan issue.
I understand, definitely.
So what's the choice? Not approve it if we don't have someone here?
But you could do that.
To extend it?
You could, to die it.
I mean, it seems that there's some major issues with this.
Should we get her on the phone? This, this person?
I can call her, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can table it.
What about, what about approval with?
That's how I was writing it, approval with conditions.
Well, I think it's good if we could just get an extension.
What about approval subject to the condition that they submit a conforming site plan?
Well, that's what Claire is saying.
Which means we get another bite of the apple.
That's what Claire is saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so technically, we're not in default.
I'd prefer to table it since we do have a lot more items on the agenda and there's the option to get in touch with this person who might give us an extension.
Of course, I'm gonna go through the rest of my items, then I'll call her.
Okay.
That's great.
So Claire, your true iron looks a little steep.
Yes, so that's number six.
Maintenance bond, right?
Right, so the, the amount of landscaping with this is $43,817. So that makes the maintenance bond of $14,600 being set for the site plan.
You have a motion for that, motion by Dennis? Second by, by Gloria and all in favor. Close extension, seven in favor.
And I have conscience points, number 14.
Number 14. Completeness. Is this town property?
This is not. It's owned by the Conscious Points-
It's owned by the-
Muleos Society.
It's hit the South Hampton History Museum.
Right.
Yes.
Right, remember.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's adjacent to town property.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Claire. This would be to deem the application complete. Let me just pull up the address. If you can see the aerial.
Those are better.
Save the calories.
Save the calories for underneath.
Also made by Christine.
So you saw this as a work session on April 13th? I think you, you were generally in favor of this. I think at the work session, I'm sorry, I didn't review it, but I think, if I'm correct, Mark, that they said no public hearing, right? Okay. I could just identify yourself for the record if you don't mind, up in the podium or, or here at the table, either one.
Mark Matthews, 220 Shore Road, president of the Conscious Point Shelf Exchange ring.
Okay, so I'm recommending, based on that information, to waive the public hearing but do limited referrals to the Environmental Division, DEC. I'm not quite sure about Fire Marshal's usual A or B and I'm not quite sure about the Landmarks Board, but would there be any association with that?
Hmm, wouldn't think so.
I don't know.
How old are the buildings?
They're not old, they're shod.
No, so-
I mean, the Tupper Boot House is landmark, but that's, that's adjacent.
That's adjacent?
Adjacent property.
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't wanna, you know, have a, to be an issue at the end of the project. Which always seems to be.
Written comment period for what, 30 days, 10 days?
Yes.
30 days.
30 days typical.
Okay.
And that will be till July 10th. It will be deemed incomplete as of today and comma period until July 10th.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extension, seven in favor, thank you, thank you.
I beat many of those oysters, Mark.
Claire, 720 Butter?
Yeah, that's an extension for 90 days to September 15th.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Craig, all in favor. Close extensions, seven in favor. And where did the-
I'm not gonna do Joe yet. I'm going to do, have the other two planners come through. They won't have time to do that.
I'm not sure whether this is appropriate, but I'm gonna ask anyway. We're seeing an awful lot of communication from the, from the public on, on this Butter Lane application that looks like there's stuff that's being done that should be code enforcement. How, does that work, anything through us, or how does that work?
Did you, did we get? You saw something on 720 Butter Lane?
The Bs.
The Bs?
No, the Bs are 625 Butter Lane.
Okay, that's 625.
625 Butter Lane.
They were first in the town planning office.
Okay, I'm just, I've, it, wrong Butter Lane.
Okay.
This is the hemp, this is the hemp facility.
This is hemp.
This is the hemp facility. You gave phase one approval, so there is activity on the property. Phase two is-
Falcowski. Falcowski's got it. 90 days to what, Claire?
To September 20, oh, sorry, September 15th.
September, did we vote? All right, Claire, you'll come back, right?
I'm coming back. I'm coming back and by to B is off. That's number 18, the signature. So let me go call Tara and I will let you know what she says.
Okay. Anthony, you wanna start with Streblin Klein?
Actually, lovely ladies, if I could let him go first. I think it's number 10, 21 Columbia, Inc.
Sure. 21, number 10, 21 Columbia, Inc.
Okay. So we have a new application. It is a property, it's actually two properties. You can see on the aerial here, this is Columbia Avenue, it's south of Old Country Road, it's in West Hampton. This is a, obviously has the road frontage and then there's a larger landlocked parcel behind it. Part of this subdivision application proposal would be to provide access from Columbia through this piece. The zoning is R-40, it's in the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area. It's 8.24 acres altogether. This board actually did something on this a long time ago. I do have maps, actually, I'm gonna go through them.
But do you have a report for us?
No, no, it's just completeness.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So you remember Dennis, right? Seeing this property, okay. So they're coming in and they're provided a yield map showing the access coming off Columbia through this piece here, and then they're showing six lots. And I've discussed this with the applicant, we're gonna be meeting to go over some of the requirements. Like the other larger subdivision, we'll probably have a work session on this one because they were talking about some affordable and, so, you know, there's gonna be some work that we need to do. You know, then they show a seven lot plan because if you have a yield of six, you have to give them the 10% for the affordable housing. And then they also provided a cluster plan which provided some open space on the portion of the property. At this stage of the game, I'm just recommending that we deem the application incomplete. I had a checklist, I offered to the applicant that I'm gonna sit down and go over everything with, with them, make sure we have the proper information on the yield map, and then we'll probably come in for a work session.
To see which is the best configuration, yeah.
See the best configuration and all that stuff. But I wanted to get them started in the process, so.
Great. So a motion to deem this incomplete?
Deem it incomplete.
Is Columbia the, that very narrow, where that runs parallel to Summit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, west, west of Summit. Anthony, just before you do, what's, I noticed that in all versions, they're treating this as flag lots?
Well, that was one of the, that was one of the-
Would we be, would we be better off, can we fit the road?
Well, that was one of the, you can see on the yield map here, they sort of put in like this dotted cul-de-sac, so that was one of the things is that we're probably just gonna have to show the whole road there as part of the yield map as opposed to flag lots. So that was one of the things that, that I discussed. So, yeah, they, they're acknowledging a road there, but don't really show it. So that was one of the, the mapping items, so, yeah.
And there you get rid of the flag, if you do, if you do an actual road, the cul-de-sac, you get rid of the flags.
Correct, that's correct.
It becomes a cleaner lot. Yep.
Does that affect the yield?
That's what I was, what's the width of each flag?
I, I, not necessarily, not necessarily.
Because the flag would be at least 10 feet wide each.
Yeah, and then probably 20.
You only need 50 feet for the road right away.
50 feet.
I don't think the cluster makes sense anymore.
In this area, you don't get anything there, right? And if we're, if we're gonna get affordable housing out of it, probably wanna, you know, see what we could get out of that, so.
Bulk up the size of the lots.
What's that?
Bulk up the size of the lots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I recommend deeming it incomplete and then we'll bring, we'll bring the applicant back, incomplete, incomplete, sorry.
Yeah, okay, a motion to deem this incomplete by Gloria and second by, who said that, Kate?
Craig.
Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extension, seven in favor. Anthony Donato, is it?
Want to go back to the beginning?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, right to the beginning, yeah. So Streblin Klein?
Everybody remembers this piece? This is the Hamlet Commercial zoning piece right next to the post office in West Hampton, which is right next to the 711 West Hampton. This was a town piece at one point. That was sold to the applicant. I'll set up here.
Yeah, please.
Good to have you, Anthony.
So is this correct, that his action deadline was April 26th?
No.
No, that's incorrect.
That's a mistake on the agenda, my-
Is it an action deadline? No.
Anthony, do you want this?
Uh, no. But this is a very straight, this was, if you remember, this is the one where the town's, yeah, this was a simplified site plan, so to speak, the town. This person purchased this property from the town to do this little office project. I'll go through it with you real quick. I don't, didn't do a report on this one, it's a pretty, I have a resolution here. I have the referral comments in here that I'm gonna go through with the board, but it's a very straightforward type on application. Mr. Hamlet Commercial.
So it's H-2?
Yeah. Proposing, I could probably put it on there, actually, I will put it up there. A little hard to see, but I'll, I'll blow it up. So here's Mill Road, this is the post office right next door. Very straightforward, 3,000 square foot office building. There won't be any other uses in there. This went to the zoning board to get a relief from the parking. I think it was one parking space, you know, that they needed relief from. They also got relief for the transition yard. Looking at the aerial, this is technically residential, well, not technically, it's residentially zoned here. So technically, you would have a transition yard setback even for a driveway, but this is town-owned land, isn't going to be developed with any residences. So the better site plan design was to go to the zoning board to keep the driveway over here. And then they got the relief. And we had them show this connection here. One of the conditions in the approval you'll see was to note a future cross-access. This is the post office, probably gonna be the post office for many, many years to come, but we're planning, right? You never know what, what the feds are going to do, so.
They might go out of business.
That's right.
Hundred percent, you're not kidding.
You're raising the stamp.
It's like sixty cents.
It's a dollar for Europe, it's crazy.
And you can see it's gonna have, they have the stone veneer, it's going to be like a hardy plank, a composite material. Natural attractive design. Easier elevation.
This was formally approved with an American Legion Hall?
The property, yeah, there used to be an American Legion Hall there.
But it was really, it was really badly deteriorated.
So they tore it down?
Yeah. In fact, I think the town tore it down before they sold the property.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So only a very simple site plan, I'll put that site plan back up there. And if you go to the first page of the resolution, oh, first, whereas it's just project description, it's a Type Two action. I went to the zoning board, as I said. If you look at the bottom, we got referral comments, the first one was from the Office of Fire Prevention. On page one and two, if you continue, they just give their standard requirements, you know, key box for these commercial properties. It says the dumpster shoving enclosed is required by the town code. I didn't put that in my resolution as a condition because their site plan has the enclosure in the plan on there.
So it's taken care of.
So, and they said they have adequate fire protection for this site. The next one was the highway superintendent who approved the project. The next one was West Hampton Fire District, didn't have any objections. The next one was the Architectural Review Board. I had graded out just because I didn't have the date available, they approved it at one of their meetings, I think a month ago, so I just gotta put in the date, that's all. And they approved it with no conditions. The DPW had a little discussion, we talked about sidewalks, right? So the DPW came back and they want a note on the site plan that regarding the replacement of all broken, cracked, raised and non-compliant curb and sidewalk for the entire frontage along CR seventy-one. So we're gonna put that in there. And then, it's a little wonky, I'll just explain to you, it used to be that when we were dealing with these referrals to the DPW and the DOT, it happened at the time of a building permit application. That's when those referrals were getting done. We started doing them during the site plan process because a lot of times they incorporate things that could affect the curb cut. In this case, it doesn't look like it, but they are requiring that the applicant do the repairs to the sidewalk, so we're gonna incorporate that into our approval.
Is Mill Road a company?
That, yeah.
Really, yeah, I never realized that.
Yeah, I didn't know that either, actually. When I was doing my referrals, it popped up and, so that's good, so they're gonna, gonna fix that. Then the next res, Plan Board reviewed the site plan with respect to the site plan criteria. So the resolution on the bottom of page two recommends approval, it's grayed out because I just didn't lay out the fifteen pages in the plans there. I like to lay them out one by one to say what they are. So I will put that in the resolution, it's just that there's a lot of them. Some changes to the site plan that I'm recommending is the notation required by the DPW regarding the improvements to the sidewalks out there.
Can we say that regarding sidewalks?
I can say that, sure, I will fix that.
I mean, you know it, but.
Yeah, no, no, but we'll put in the full language from there.
Thank you.
Note the future cross access. They put it all in place, but they should put a note there that says future cross access. And then also, like we would do, they gotta do the sidewalks here, let's get a walkway from the sidewalk to the front of the building.
Nice.
Changes to the landscaping plan, they have a landscaping plan that's going to be, you know, the woods in the back are gonna be preserved, most of the property's been cleared. The landscaping looks pretty good, a lot of these commercial buildings, we like some ornamentals to sort of, you know, spruce it up. But one of the things I'm recommending, some street trees in the front here, fifty feet on center is good.
Good.
And then the plan didn't show it, but they are supposed to show some evergreen plantings around the dumpster, you know, so that, that's good. Changes to the lighting plan, revised to demonstrate compliance with the maximum three hun, three thousand Kelvin for the correlated color temperature.
Is that the new lighting, didn't, there was new amendment to the lighting code?
I don't think that was a change, I'm not sure on specifics that were changed. I took right out of the code right off, you know, from our. For the three thousand Kelvin, a lot of these site plans, they always show something going over that.
Four, four.
Four, five, you're absolutely right, so, so we'll keep this one at three thousand. Revised to demonstrate the illuminance at or beyond the easterly property line, which is the town land here, does not exceed zero point zero five foot candle. Most of them were actually at zero, you know, there might have been a few little spillovers, so I'm just gonna have them revise it so there's no question about it. They have to show on the plans the fixtures that they're using, they did provide the details in the separate sheets, but they should go on the lighting plan. And they should show compliance with the twelve foot maximum, and that's.
Ten foot. We always request ten feet.
Ten feet?
Yeah.
Perfect, I have no problem with that. And then show the lighting fixtures, types and details on the lighting plan. And then general conditions of approval here, all signage is subject to planning board approval. HVAC, equipment shall be screened and not be visible from the roadway, no installation of dawn, of dusty dawn lighting. No further lighting without planning board approval, everything has to be projected downward. Pre-construction meeting with the engineer. I want to put in here some language that the applicant is advised to consider some of these green site plan items.
Oh, yes, yes.
Can you just give me one second and I will just look something up?
How? You said you had language, right?
I believe I do.
How, how many parking spaces?
There are, I'll look for you in just one second. The planning board strongly encourages the applicant to consider incorporating sustainable green design elements into the site plan to maximize, to the maximum extent possible and where appropriate, including but not limited to rooftop, solar panels, electric vehicle charging stations, grass pavers, pervious surfaces, green stormwater management and LED certification for buildings.
Not bad, that's a lot. Can you share it with all the other planners?
I will. I did put that in one of our, probably in a few of our reports, actually, so.
So G will just say.
It will, it will say just, just what I just stated there about the sustainability design element.
Well, you know, on Type One and on listed actions, we've got a much stronger hand because they, you know, and our whole energy issue is a secret.
Totally. And this was a Type Two action, so that's why, and like the other ones, so you put in the language.
As a recommendation.
Anthony, I could consider adding something to that.
Yeah, of course.
So at what point, when they, when, when they're putting in sprinkler system for saw, grass, whatever, that, is that a, does the building department kind of have any say in what to put in as far as sprinkler system?
Inside or on the?
No, inside, outside, for plants.
Probably not, no.
There's like, you know, some type of less water usage sprinklers.
Well, you know. Well, just, just even the kind that, that doesn't run, it's rated.
Right, exactly. So, you know, I can work with you on some language on that because that irks me like nothing else, when it's pouring rain and you have to make the sprinklers doing, so.
They say that they have a new computer system, some of the irrigation companies.
Yeah.
That will automatically turn off.
Yes. You know, you have rain sensors and it's as simple as I, I change over my box to something called Beehive years ago where.
Oh, I have the same thing.
It automatically tells you if it's a rain delay of twenty-four hours, even if you have a program, it just doesn't rain.
Yeah.
And I, I never have a program, I just sprinkle my lawns manually every time.
Yeah.
You know, because I hate wasting water, you know, Gloria knows the thing for solar power, my thing is water.
Well, I also, I have, I have that Hy-Vee system as well because I have drip irrigation.
Right.
Well, Hampton Bays is on, on odd even days, it had been for a couple of years, Hampton Bays.
Yeah, we're in drought, yeah.
Odd even.
So now I'm gonna put in, in addition to that statement, I'll add something about minimizing or, you know, sprinkler usage, or, you know, I'll come up with some language.
Yeah.
Similar to what I did here, but I'll include something for sprinklers.
Efficient, maximize efficient water use for landscaping.
With any sprinklers assumption, include like rain sensors or.
Yeah. Such as rain sensors.
Well, to, to expand on that, and if you really wanna get crazy, my father, when my father-in-law had his home built, he, all of his gutters, they drained down to underground, you know, catch, catch.
Sisters.
With pumps in them and then he recycles that rainwater into his irrigation system.
Good, and then I'll, I'll come up with something beyond this, and that will put in another approval, pretty good.
Yeah, my goddess, my goddess go into a system because that's actually town code there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
And then on page four, number five, prior to signature, we want the recording, the, you know, submission, approval, and then recording of the future cross access agreement. I couldn't address that.
Yeah.
Type certification, mortgage, and the affidavit, and then the six sets of plans. And then prior to a CO, the submissions of a maintenance bond for the landscape.
Good report, Anthony.
Much better.
Very complete. Okay, any other questions? Motion to approve by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor? Opposed, extension seven in favor.
What do I have next?
You have bridge facilities and the maintenance bond?
Oh, yeah, so.
Or the release of the maintenance.
The release of the maintenance, it's quite a, quite a bond, actually. So this is Bridge Facilities, this is a, this was a project that the planning board approved, I believe it's HC zone. I believe it's office use, this was a Lou Mizell building, actually, Lou's.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Lou's done a lot of stuff. And just actually, I took a little bit of a street view for everybody. There was a lot of debate going, and he actually did green infrastructure on this property. This is a year ago because we don't have twenty twenty-three aerials yet and street views. But he did the, the grass, the grass pavers and so forth, but this is an older photo, but this is actually what the building looks like. We struggled with this for a while when we reviewed the application. I actually think the building looks sort of nice.
And this is on?
And this is on Montauk Highway in, for Hampton. I actually think the building looks nice, but the landscaping is in order. So I'm recommending finally the release of forty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars in maintenance bond.
Motion.
Releasing, okay. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension seven in favor. Okay, moving on to Joseph Greiner.
Yep, so this is one that we had a work or discussion on, I had an app, Jim Hume submitted an applicant or an application to, to eliminate this twenty-five foot wide natural buffer. This is one that had the, has all that bamboo that's growing in there.
Full disclosure, the Griners, again, close friends of ours, but I can review it without prejudice.
No problem, I appreciate that. What happened was, this was a subdivision that was done, I don't remember, a year, two thousand and something, eight, ten. Created this lot here, already had an existing residence on there, and then created the second lot down here, which was vacant. But this house was already existing and they imposed this twenty-five foot buffer at the time. I, usually you try to do it when you have vacant property and you try to, and, you know, do it there. There's no other buffers in this area, so they put in a request to eliminate the buffer and then we just said, you know, is there something they could do maybe to keep like a hedge or something for the neighbor, which they're willing to do. However, looking at the covenants, we do have to have a public hearing on this one, so.
What, really?
Yeah.
Is that super majority?
Some of them do it, it's subject to a public hearing.
When was that, when was this covenant?
The older ones.
Eight, I think, something like that.
There's something about two thousand twelve.
Oh, two thousand twelve, maybe, I'm sorry.
I questioned that because it was still.
Yeah.
Why, why was, why, we were looking at something.
Well, actually, believe it or not, more recently, we would probably do asking for the public hearings, you'll find some of the older ones, they may not actually say it in there. But, so in this case, we're just gonna have to schedule a public, for a public hearing for a covenant amendment for June twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, July twenty-seventh.
July twen, but is, Anthony, was this also a bamboo issue here?
It was a bamboo issue too. So, but because there's a natural, no disturbance, non-fertilization buffer, they did the right thing, they came in, they said, you know, we wanted to clean this up, but we can't touch anything in there. And that's when they were like, maybe we should just eliminate this buffer so we can sort of deal with it. And then they said they'd be willing to put up, you know, whatever, to protect the neighbors, which I think would be adequate.
Do we need to address the bamboo issue in this?
I'm gonna, yeah, I've gotta do some research here on this because we don't have anything in the code.
The town never passed that as an invasive species.
No.
And they were going to.
Yep.
And that's what's in the buffer?
Yeah, some, and then what happens is, it doesn't take very long for it to get worse and worse.
It's pretty, it's pretty dense, so. From their house last week. That house is like.
It's all bamboo in the back, yeah. I mean, we had it in our yard too and it took years to get rid of.
All you have to do is.
The metal barrier put up, all kinds of stuff.
When, when my husband and I first started landscaping, we tried, tried to put some bamboo on the side of our driveway because we thought that would be, because it grows so fast. And it would last seven to eight hours, as soon as the shoots came up out of the ground, the deer would eat it all down to the stalk.
Really?
So it, it never grew.
Wow.
Perfect.
Saturday morning, you go out, walk the dog, and by Sunday it was gone.
Would you send those deer to my house?
Well, in a more, in a more, less typical environment, it grows.
I wanna take Gloria into the Griner's home just to make her smile because it's geothermal and they just put a new garage in, new garage has the solar panels on top.
Beautiful, we like it.
They both, they drive electric cars, it's like. I don't know if you're religious, but this might be, it's close to heaven, it's your legacy.
Please church.
And they have a right to take out that bamboo, which is.
So, so it's scheduled the hearing for July twenty-seventh.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
By extensions.
That's July twenty-seventh.
Seven in favor.
Then we did number twelve.
Yeah, let's move on with you.
Eric Donato, this was a two lot subdivision that we looked at, it's on Bay Avenue in Hampton Bays. It's R twenty zoning district, had to go to the zoning board, maybe for a lot width and something like that. And includes this separate parcel, which is a right of way, that gives access to this property up here and provides access to this piece. It's all in the same ownership, actually, so the key with this subdivision is just making sure that whatever we're doing here, that the language of this easement remains unchanged. But they came in with the final application without the health department, because they were getting to that, we did the extension and the reapproval of the pre-op, so we're getting close to the deadline and they, so they came in fairly with the final application, so we'll just deem it incomplete for the time being.
Incomplete.
Until they get health department, that was the only thing that was missing.
Okay, motion to deem it incomplete by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, extension seven in favor.
Thirteen is off.
Thirteen is Hampton Cove Estates is off.
And so it's fifteen, actually.
And fifteen is off?
Fourteen fifty-six SRR.
You just have one from Jeff, isn't it?
That's it for you.
Oh, no, Claire has to do her own.
Unless Jeff is on.
And, and Claire's gotta come back.
She's gonna come back and.
Yeah, she also has.
She has your gas.
Never goes fast. That's only a big, big.
I think we should put the timer on.
Signs, you have big pieces of cardboard, but there it is. That doesn't look good.
I, I, I've done timing for this, for the league's board.
Okay, let's jump to number eight in your packet.
This is the one, number eight.
Sag Lion Properties, Lot Two. We got two site services.
Oh, that's not my favorite line.
Here.
Excuse me, guys.
Yeah, all this stuff is in the order.
He's trying to talk.
Sorry, Jeff.
Oh, don't worry, don't worry.
You wanted to do eight?
Number eight, Sag Lion Properties, Lot Two. It's a site disturbance, it's to consider restoration of thirteen point seven one percent of overcleared natural vegetation on a two hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred twenty-nine square foot property, which is permitted to clear up to fifty-five percent. This is a two lot subdivision, if you're familiar with it, this is adjacent to a cell site, right off of Middle Line Highway.
Cell site.
A cell site. They are proposing to build on Lot Two of this two, a two lot subdivision. At the time of the subdivision, which is actually, I believe, two thousand and eighteen subdivision.
Is it still alive, or that subdivision, or not?
Uh, no, no, it's closed out, finalized, incomplete. They had proposed an easement and actually proposed a cell site on Lot Two, and that was actually changed to Lot One. They have since submitted paperwork for building permits to build on Lot Two, while Lot One will remain a cell site. At the time of the application, or at the time of the subdivision, rather, clearing here was limited to fifty-five percent. There is some slope concerns here, but it's more so at the north, I would say northeast corner of the lot. Most of the clearing has occurred actually right around here, and they also proposed most of the vegetation along the property line on this side, which I actually have, I don't have an issue with, considering that it's adjacent to the cell site. I'll show you.
And it's APOD.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
It had some pre-existing clearing, which was granted as part of the subdivision.
Jeff, is this the cell, the giant cell tower that's there now?
Yeah.
Off of Millstone Road?
Correct.
Okay.
Millstone Road?
Well, it's very near Millstone Road.
Yeah, near, yeah.
It's just, it's up the hill from Millstone.
I'll rotate this for you.
Because I thought you were talking about putting another cell tower in.
Oh, no, 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 no. Well, it, it, it has some impact on this proposing family dwelling for the fact that it's directly adjacent to it.
Mm-hmm.
So they're proposing restoration of vegetation with some mature oak trees, some American beeches and some ground cover as well. And again, I don't have an issue with the placement, primarily if they're gonna have a single family dwelling here, you kinda wanna block out and screen the cell tower itself. As well as some vegetation along Middle Line Highway. Show you another aerial. Someone closed it out, Anthony.
It was like summer.
But the plan itself does bring, once implemented, will bring the property in compliance with the fifty-five percent allowable clearing on it.
So Anthony, just understand the process, you would restore it now, then they would build?
So, sorry. So we would approve the restoration plan and can be implemented during construction. Before they receive the CO, we, I would go out, do a, perform an inspection, make sure it's compliant to the approved plan, and then they could receive their CO once, once they pass their final inspection. they pass their final inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Is the, the cell lot over-cleared, or?
The cell lot, I'm not sure. Both lots came with some pre-existing clearing on it. It was delineated in the subdivision. I believe this one was about 20, 22%, while the Lot 2, the subject property, was given 55%. I went through the aerials. It hasn't deviated much, but enough, considering it's a pretty big piece, at 200-plus thousand, 100,000 square feet, so it seems more substantial than it actually is percentage-wise, but they are restoring 13.71% in totality.
It looks pretty bare.
Yeah, even at the time of the subdivision, considering what, it's a five-year-old subdivision, it's what it looked like as well at the time.
I did the subdivision, so I'm trying to work aware of this one.
Yeah.
I remember. We got the little, the little square piece at the other side.
Anthony.
The little square piece at the opposite end there. That, that was a piece dedicated to the town, because the town wanted to blaze the, there's a trail coming right through the corn grove, and you can see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, then we got that. That was the one thing we got out of the.
Well, that's good, I'm very familiar. Okay, so.
So, yeah, we'd like to recommend we approve the restoration plan.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by, uh, Tom, Tom?
Tony Crown.
By Tom, sorry, Tom.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed by substitutions, seven in favor.
Right?
Eight. We'll move to number nine.
County, countryside estates.
Countryside estates, Lot 10. Also, site disturbance restoration application to restore 25% of over-clearing of natural vegetation. This lot is located at Three Pleasant Lane in East Quogue. Here we are.
Now, this is in Central Pine Barrens compatible growth, so do they have a, a different threshold?
Uh, no, same threshold. The applicant has to maintain 60% allowable clearing, which is consistent with the subdivision and compatible growth area, the Central Pine Barrens. You'll notice a structure here that has since been removed, which I believe was the cause of the over-clearing on the property. It's a greenhouse, it looks like, by the previous owner. The new owner, I guess unbeknownst to them, purchased it with the clearing violation, and they are proposing, I believe, a detached garage on the property, which is what triggered their application to us.
So they need to restore 25% of the property?
Yep, they need to restore 25%.
Which brings them up to 60?
Which brings up to 60, which would equate to about 22,000, or actually in total, 25% of the 22,644 square feet. Let me bring the veg plan for you. Here we go.
So just to follow the timeline, that we have a new owner?
Yep.
Who purchased the house with the?
Violation.
Non-conforming structures on it?
Correct.
How did it get to that point?
Clearly they didn't have an attorney.
They didn't have good time.
The, the, it doesn't, title doesn't pick it up because it's not all as a violation. If the town issues a violation, then the title report, and title company will pick it up. But if you're purchasing a property and the town is unaware of these existing structures that don't have COs or permits, then you can kind of get away with selling it and never knowing until you come to us and we see your survey, and we notice that you have a structure that doesn't have a CO.
Yeah, it's an all cash sale, you're not going to a bank.
Yeah, I mean, but you should look to see.
Even if you know what the violation is.
That is a CO whenever it's on the property. If you have a good attorney, presumably they would do that.
Generally, generally, you'd request the updated CO. The updated CO wouldn't pick up on this because it required an updated survey, but the nature of the market today, with it being so busy, folks don't want to wait for that, you just want to get a deal done. So, that's what primarily triggered the, this violation, and us even knowing about the violation, so.
And what, they came in for what, that they got?
Uh, I believe they're applying for a detached garage on the property.
Okay.
Most of the vegetation, you'll notice, is at the front of the property. They want to maintain some open lawn area at the rear of the property, so they want to accomplish the restoration process through the front, and vegetation through the front of the property. Their proposed plantings and quantities all meet the requirements for Aquafore Valley District, so I'd recommend approving the site plan, or, excuse me, this site disturbance application.
Where does the proposed, where's the proposed garage going?
I believe to the right here.
So it's not going to impact the re-vegged areas, right?
It's not going to impact the re-vegged areas.
You see garage, Anthony?
It looks like it's attached.
Oh, sorry, attached, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Motion to approve, motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor, opposed by substitutions, seven in favor.
Lastly, we have the Landrill Farms, number 11 in your packet.
Right.
This is a proposed, let's see, we're merging two single, separate lots located at 2901 and 2883 Quogue Riverhead Road. Here we are. Each lot is, meets requirement for CR8 zoning, 80,000 square feet plus. They're merging this lot here, the smaller piece, along with this larger piece. You'll notice some existing structures on the lot. Those existing structures benefit from a pre-existing CO. Those structures, I'll tell you specifically what they are. So one, one two-story, one-family dwelling, one one-story, one-family dwelling, one two-story barn, which was demoed via later permit, two store, two accessory storage buildings, three greenhouses, and one flower shop. At the, once we deem this, once we deem this complete, we'll refer this to the Landmark Historic Board, see if there's any historical significance. I don't know if, if Wayne knows anything about that particularly, but the, the subdivision map itself meets all the requirements, so we can move forward with a public hearing. And I'll show you the map. Come on, there we go. She notes here, the, the sliver of land that will be merging as part of the subdivision is going to serve as their common driveway, which will give them the road footage they need. As the standard plan is currently situated, does not require any variances, and in terms of size, inconsistency consistency with the neighboring properties, which are also in between 40,000 to 80,000 square feet. Forty, are 40s actually adjacent, this property across the street, across Quogue Riverhead Road, but most of these lots here meet the requirement for CR8.
So these are both 80,000 square feet?
All three are 80,000 square feet, correct.
And the zone is CR8?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's complete, and you want to schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, we don't deem it as complete. Schedule a public hearing for July 13th.
July 13th.
Are the existing houses all being knocked down, they're starting new?
Presumably. But of course, once we deem it complete, we'll refer to the historic landbark and see if there's any real value of those structures themselves. They do have a pre-existing CO, so we'll do some research and give us a report on that. All right?
Okay, July 13th?
July 13th.
Any other questions? Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor, opposed by substitutions, seven in favor.
I'm not sure if Claire was able to confirm or parlay that.
She also had an application with Joe.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the last one.
Joe, sorry, you'll have to come back and.
I can start.
No, let's, no, no, we have another pending decision.
We don't want to interrupt you in mid-song.
I have a song for you guys, man. It takes 16 minutes.
You want to set up some of what you brought in?
Well, you should open the board.
No, 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 we can't, Joe, we haven't, we haven't moved on to you, sorry. Did tell, did Anthony just go get Claire? Um, we have. Kristen, have you printed out the public notice?
Yes.
One, two, three.
I think it's four.
I think it's six, actually.
It's not six.
But it's, it's, okay now, so that's gonna be.
Six.
So if you have them, we can, yeah, in a sec, when we finish.
Okay.
Claire?
I don't know if I put anything in the packet, did I?
So, did you reach the person?
No, I have not reached the person. I left her a message and an email. I tried her cell phone, left her a message and stuff.
Okay.
Can we review our options again?
Your options are to approve the, the site plan with the condition that they come back with the plan for your review and approval.
For, for the public that's going to be listening, can we repeat what we're talking about?
Yeah, with the three, five Montauk Highway, which is tables. It is the site plan that we reviewed, and the planning board is considering, yeah, we are at action deadline for the project.
Because of the fire marshal's comments.
Comments.
And a no vote sends them back to the beginning of the process?
Yeah.
No.
Not necessarily.
Where does it set them back to?
Um, if you deny the project, we dip to denying based on the fire marshal comments.
Or we do an approval.
They can amend the site plan. They can come back and amend, make an amendment.
Another possibility is approving with subject to submission of a conforming plan, a plan that conforms to the fire marshal, which means we're not in default, but yet doesn't have a valid site plan.
Right, they cannot go for the.
But if we deny.
That actually is probably a better idea.
Yeah, that way.
But a denial is not a default.
Right. No, I know, but this way, it's more unlikely that anyone's going to challenge an approval.
Well, it's the way business has been done forever, here, you know, just approve it.
But you're doing it subject to what you need.
Right, but we haven't seen what they.
It sounds like one sticking point. A denial basically wipes out all his other, all the other features of the site plan that, that are conforming, that are agreed to, except, you know, whereas if we go the alternate way, we're approving it, he's got to submit a conforming site plan that complies with the, the recommendations of the fire marshal.
If that happens in your, you would be disapproving it, then that, that's what you would do.
And in reality, we really just want to see what the site plan looks like with all those parking spaces removed.
Yeah.
You know, it's really wanting to see that, the issues.
There are issues, you know, we also need a revised report with all those issues in.
Well, the new, the amended site plan would constitute, would trigger new, you know, revised report.
Right. It'll be the report with the changes that we've talked about to date, and then the new plan, which will have a referral back to the fire marshal to verify that it is conforming before you see it, and then you'll see it with a complete picture of the parking layout, which is your big issue related to the fire marshal.
Right.
That's my recommendation.
And the entrance, the exit, the signage, all of that, all of that stuff has to go in.
Sidewalk.
Signage, sidewalk.
Yeah, that's going to be part of our approval.
But that's going to be part of your, you're going to redraft that.
Right, and so you want the, now the entrances to be enter and exit only?
Yep.
Even though that one is big enough for enter and exit, the one to the east?
Yeah.
I think we want the east enter and the west exit.
Exit.
East enter.
East is enter and the west is exit.
West exit.
And no left turn.
And no left turn from the west one.
Right, exactly.
I tell you what, if we're getting into that, you know, you have the, as you talk, there's driveways across the street, there's a merge of two lanes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kind of like to, if it's appropriate, have somebody look at that and give us recommendations if we want to go in that direction.
No left turn is sort of the prudent way. We do that a lot on the North Highway, just preclude cars from making the left, you know.
Right, right, no, as to which is the entrance, which is the exit.
East would be the entrance, because.
The only way you can get in is coming from the.
The west, the west is too narrow.
You'd have to cross the, you'd have to cross over.
The west is just like a single lane. You wouldn't want, you wouldn't want a car trying to get in and someone trying to get out of that west.
So the east entrance, the east is going to be the entrance.
The entrance, right.
The west.
It's going to be an exit.
Exit only.
Yeah.
You'd have a signage, no.
But no left.
Correct.
Right, because you'd be killed.
Right.
And also, you can't get in.
On the North Highway, we do a lot of the site plans.
If you're driving from the west, you can't, you'd have to cross over two lines of traffic.
A lot of the North Highway site plans, all the gas stations, we precluded left turns, all the shot and centers. And that, the North Highway has a turning lane.
At certain places, just, okay, as long as you folks.
I mean, I'd say there's a number of issues.
The North Highway actually has a turning lane.
Penalty.
Still preclude the left turns.
You've been denying a project for, why? Because it doesn't meet the fire marshal, which the fire marshal is, is, they have to comply with the fire marshal. There's no, there's no if, ands, buts. That's not something you can override. They have to. So I'm just going to, I mean, the condition is, and the record says, I'm recommending, you know, it to be revised. You're going to look at it, see if there's any more site plan issues related to the loss of those parking spaces.
I would feel comfortable if we get a revised draft report, like soon, if you can send it to us.
Of course.
So that, you know, we speak about all of these things, but we're, we're taking some notes, but not all notes. You're taking notes, so that we know exactly what we're talking about. So, so Kate, if, if we approve it conditionally, in other words, we're not approving it.
Well, we are.
You're not, there's going to be no activity on this property until you see a plan that's been approved by the fire marshal. And that's the, that's the big sticking point.
Yeah.
Right.
But if we, if we, if we vote now, and we get a report tomorrow, and it doesn't reflect what we thought we voted on, we voted on it.
Right, but they're never going to get a building permit.
I know, but not comfortably.
But when the revised site plan comes in, when the revised site plan, the amended site plan comes in, you have another bite at the apple.
And if they never come in to get your review, the site plan expires in 90 days.
Yeah.
Well, we have an incomplete site plan to begin with. It's an incomplete site plan, so I mean, it's a submission issue.
We shouldn't have set it up for a hearing.
Well, we don't prefer to the fire marshal until a site plan is complete for certain standards.
So it's an incomplete site plan.
It is not, that's not, that's not a site plan completeness issue, is compliance with the fire marshal. They just have to always comply with the fire marshal. That's why it's not something you, is a completeness issue.
We can't refer to the fire marshal until we deem it complete. Completeness is just they pay the fee, they've got the requisite number of plans, they have.
The town engineer information.
So we deemed it complete?
Yeah.
We deemed it complete without looking at the parking? Without, we looked at a site plan that had, didn't have parking on it, and we deemed it complete?
You can bury the parking.
That's bad on us.
But we deemed, we, we determined that it was a minor, it was a minor issue, because they had a proportionate billing that was already part of the billing they were just going to include, so that's why we went there.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's the one across the street, yeah, the BMW.
Yeah.
I think the key issue here is that when something has an action deadline, if staff could let the applicant know to be at the hearing. could let the applicant know to be at the hearing, that would, because that would solve the whole thing, it's like, geez, we want to just take a little bit more time with it, but we can't get a hold of them, so now we're backed into a corner on yes with condition or no, and if we're protected with yes with condition of meeting the fire marshal approval, I think that's, that's fine, it accomplishes the goal of getting something that's gonna be safe and well-planned, however, it would have been better if we could have a little bit more time and to look at the report revised and vote on it in two weeks, right? So maybe that's, that's what I'll say about that.
Yes, and I have, I informed her of the dates, and I recommended she was here.
And so it's.
So this is not, you know, not something that I always.
Sure, and I'm not saying that's on you, but I think also, that's a matter of procedure too, where, you know, if we do need an extension, what is our decision as a board to say, well, the person wasn't here to give the extension, then the answer is no, or we permit them to not be present and we just move it forward.
Usually my other option here, if it's something like the town engineer needs, you know, a new piece of information, I'd be recommending that we deem it can complete again, but the problem is, it's not a completeness issue, it is that they have to comply with the fire marshal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Which they will always have to do, I think, every day.
I agree with Dennis, we're gonna have another opportunity to take a look at this, take a bite out of the apple, that's Dennis.
Yes, exactly.
But I think Kate makes a really good point, when this is an action deadline, anything can happen, anything can come up, as it did today, the applicant should be there to give us approval for an extension, should be there.
Or to answer a question that might not need an extension.
It's a disrespect to this planning board that she's not reachable, and you say she refuses, I mean, you said adamantly that she refused.
Oh, no, she didn't refuse to come, she just was notified that she should attend and she, you know, she, I don't know her life, so I'm not quite sure.
No, but when we said, we can ask for an extension, you said no, so.
Oh, no, I'm saying I can't reach her, I can't.
Claire, does that happen by default, like, is that protocol, if we have action deadline, council is notified, hey, you have an applicant with, you know, action deadline, planning board requests that you.
They definitely know that, I mean, if they're following their cases, which they should be doing, they know that they're on.
Yeah.
Because they didn't anticipate anything, they might have figured it would be fine, so they wanted to stay in the process.
Right, right.
Right, and truthfully, it's not a lot to my, my information, you brought these questions up, which are, that's your job to do, it's not, you know, so this is not.
It's a sensitive parcel, and it has a history of code violations, so. It's not like a standard, simple plan that's going, being processed, so we, you know, this board engaged, I think admirably, in asking questions about this particular application, and we just want to make sure.
And can you review again what happens, they, they go back in with a new application, if they, if it's denied?
If it's denied, I'm going to say there's a good chance that they would sue you.
Rather than just reapply?
It's expensive.
Right, because it's expensive.
And time consumed.
Well, so does a lawyer to sue us.
Well, they would sue for damages too.
That's happened, hasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if, the issue at hand, again, is that we need to have people here on an action deadline, so that we can ask for an extension if it's needed, in terms of risk benefit and just speaking out loud here, like, if we're going to mitigate the fire access issue by the conditional approval, then I think that's fine, there are issues that could come up again procedurally in the future, and so we're setting a precedent on that, you know?
Well, I hope we're not setting a precedent, but it's really unfortunate.
We've done, subject to a plan being submitted, landscape plan, lighting plan, a site plan with some changes because the town engineer needed to review it, you've done this.
And if they can't get the sidewalk issue sorted with the DOT, that's a condition as well, so there's work to be done here before, like, a conditional approval.
Well, the sidewalk is in the right of way anyways, it is really not part of, I mean, it is a site plan element, but it is in the right of way, so there's a factor there too, if the DOT says, come back and says, I don't want it, you can't, it's not gonna be a sidewalk.
Well, we have a sidewalk right to the east of that.
Subject DOT approval.
Yes.
Yes, we said that.
So, conditional approval, they don't meet the conditions, the application dies.
Yeah.
Ninety days.
Great.
Yeah, Kate, if they don't meet the conditions.
Unless you do an action. Yeah. You're, you're gonna see this, you're gonna see the site plan again.
And you have all the ins and outs and the no left turns in.
I have no left turn from the, well, obviously there's one exit now, and that's the west exit, so west will be exit only, east will be enters only, signage, those are appropriate, right?
So then there's no way they can make, there's no left turn out of the facility at all?
To make, to make the board more comfortable, if you can.
No left turn.
Period.
Period.
Because, okay, because I thought I heard that the eastbound could go left.
No eastbound is gonna be entry only, entrance only.
Because then you, an eastbound traffic trying to get in there would have to cross over two lanes.
I'm not, let me try to reframe what I, rephrase what I just said, my understanding is the curb cut on the east side of the property is entrance only.
Yeah.
And the west side of the property is exit only and no left turn.
Correct.
So there is no way to leave that property and go east.
Correct.
They have to go, they have to go west and somehow figure out how to get east.
Right, exactly.
Okay, I just.
And I think that Tom raised a very interesting question, because it's very close to a merge lane, and ideally, we should have had some kind of traffic analysis, right? But we didn't, because we looked at it and said, oh, it's a simple enclosure of something.
That would have been, that would have been at the time of SECR, which was done in December.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at the specific little part of the application without looking at the bigger picture.
The overall, yeah.
And what they're asking for is relatively minor.
Yes.
But staff looked at all of that, it sounded like you considered, or at least you wanted the idea that you did, I understand you would have preferred to go into it more depth.
Yeah, a lot of the applications, Christine, get pushed through, because they just get pushed through, you know, we need the time to look at them, and so.
Can I just ask a question, is it possible to table the approval, just so we could see the revised staff report, is that something that you could update?
I'm not gonna stay past, I gotta leave, I got, you know, there's things to do, so I'm not revising staff reports today.
I didn't know if you were gonna be here tonight, sorry.
Is to make a motion to.
Before the motion, I have to ask one question, if we're forcing only right turns, when is, where is the next opportunity for a vehicle to? Do you, where's the next light?
Go around the traffic circle, come around.
There's a, there's a stretch, and if it's not a busy time, they would have to go across and perhaps go into where the, there's a blood cancer center there, they'd have to go into either that parking lot or one of the other ones, they have to cross access and come down and around.
They would go straight through the light, make a right at the, at the vehicle center, and then exit that other, I, I know how to get.
In the roundabout, we're gonna build there.
Just call me, I'll tell you how to do it, put my cell number on the.
Is there, is there a safe and convenient opportunity there for a driver to?
If worse comes to worse, they have to move down to the light.
Yeah.
And come around.
Can they, can they get out onto Hampton Road?
There's nowhere to go.
Yeah, I just don't want people not having the ability to hit a, a safe intersection where they could do that left and then come around again, you know, just make the right turn, look for the next parking lot, cut, cut over traffic without a light there into someone else's parking lot.
The reality, if they're going east, they're gonna tap into the head of Pond scuttle hole back road network that Bill acts, that's right off Flying Point Road, they'll make that right on Flying Point Road.
You could go down, signal, turn around, come out on David Weiss.
Don't put all those roads on the record there, Tom.
Always to do.
They're taking minutes here.
Wait, wait, wait for, tell us, tell us how to do it.
Right.
Craig, that's an issue, you know, in many corridors, where you, anywhere you make a left turn. Yeah, I just don't want to put drivers in, you know, the right turn to nowhere, that's all.
That's the safer in trying to cross, make a left turn.
Come up all along thirty-nine.
I encourage going to drive that.
Okay, so, so there's a motion on the table to approve the application conditioned upon all of the conditions that are going to be in this revised report.
Subject to the submission of a revised site plan in compliance with the, you've got that.
The fire marshal, a full parking layout, including parking and storage of cars, the appropriate, and the fire marshal comments being adjusted full, yes, for your review and approval prior to any signature of plans.
Sounds good, that's correct.
Everybody comfortable with that? I mean, as comfortable as we can be?
As comfortable as we can be.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Motion.
By Dennis, seconded by Craig, all in favor, opposed abstentions, seven in favor.
I want to abstain.
One abstention, there enough, one abstention, Kate?
Kate's abstention, six yes.
And six in favor. But we really need to.
I think we're, we're continuing to try to update process to make it better.
Yes.
Just, just so you know, there's nothing in state law, correct if I'm wrong, putting a limitation on site plan, that timetable was set by the town board years ago, because they knew this board was gonna take their sweet time with site plan with applications, and the business community put pressure on them, and they, they put the deadlines on us. What's that?
One of the only municipalities that has it, the hall of the.
That's right.
When I first came on this board, I approached one of the town board members and said thirty days is impossible to do a report, and it went up to sixty, but there are all of these very rigid time restraints that work against proper review. And Dennis is correct, it was because prior boards didn't get to look at applications, people complained, the developers complained, so we are at the effect of that, but we can, you know, collectively make some recommendations to the town board that those be changed.
You could, so what happened in this instance, just so it's clear, because I usually do bring you staff reports the two weeks prior, like I did for the other two items that are on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, usually, that's your.
So that's my MO, usually.
Yeah, usually.
This one, because you deem to complete with no public hearing, it shortens up that timeframe by another fifteen days.
Yeah.
So I only had forty-five days to do this approval in total from that timeframe, so that's what happens in this instance.
You need the time, Claire, give us a, give us a thumbs up.
Give us a heads up, and we'll ask.
Yes, you waive the public hearing, the issues, so you get these referrals back, and then the issues start piling up.
Exactly.
And we have an action deadline, and that's what happened.
Exactly, so, you know, there are, what it does is flag, is that not to waive public hearings at certain times.
There's a common place, yeah.
And, and we have no control over the referrals responding back.
Right.
So we're at, we're at their mercy, if we.
They're pretty good, I mean, in this instance, they were on time, but.
But.
Yeah.
I would say that that's not the case often, I, many applications, I see we've had no response, maybe not from what we would consider critical referrals, but we're, we're hung up on a deadline, and if, if they don't provide us with the information, or they provide it at the last minute, we're under the gun, which is a challenge, how do we handle that?
Right, also, as Christine Will knows, a default approval, it doesn't exist in most towns, if we don't vote on something on a site plan, they, the applicant gets a default approval, as is, so we are forced into it, and that, that is something that should be changed completely, I mean, even Janice has talked about it.
Right.
All right.
So we're.
This was good discussion.
Yeah.
Case study.
We care, and we're trying to make it better.
You bet, you bet, so it leaves us, Claire, with Oceanside.
Yes, so I'm gonna give you a little history here.
Please, please.
And I had to refresh myself a little bit too, because this was originally Jackie's application, and she's no longer with us, doing good work over there.
She's still with us.
But doing good work there, so I think.
We're in Old File Map.
It's an Old File Map area, so it's in Quiog, off of Peters Lane, and Jeffrey Lane is on the other side, and.
And to the north is Oakland.
Oakland Farms was the subdivision, so you know, let me pull it up on a tax map.
That never went forward, right, the town bought that out?
Oh, no.
No, it did, but the town board bought property, because it's primarily wetlands.
Wasn't that part of the open space in Oakland Farm?
So it's, it was subdivided, and it had open space, however, a portion of the open space directly to the north of this property was purchased with CPF funds, and.
Collectively, I'll get the map up.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of it was, the open space in Oakland Farm. Fifteen years. Oakland Farms, yeah, it's all built out, it's like an extension of Jeffrey Lane.
Okay, here it is.
So this is Oakland Farms.
Yeah, that's all built.
This is Oakland Farms, this is the open space that was created, see these outlines? This was additional land, and that was purchased.
That's the piece I was thinking of, yeah.
Because this is.
Up along that creek.
Yep, exactly, so you can still see the outline, even though now it's all owned.
Those are existing lots, right?
Those were lots that were created as part of your sub, the subdivision for Oakland Farms, that then consequently were purchased by CPF.
Right, so we created those lots.
You created those lots, yeah.
Which lots are we talking about, because this predates me.
Yes.
These ones.
Behind P, yeah.
Yeah.
And of the road.
And I remember Claire McCaslin during the Oakland Farms said, good rainfall, he said, everything's gonna be underwater, because it's in one of the big flood zone areas, yeah.
But we created them as building lots.
You created those building lots?
Yep.
And then the town bought them.
And then the town bought them.
Yeah, so Claire, the history is good, keep going.
So yes, so this would be all part of one Old File Map, but in his case, he chose to abandon the Old File Map and do a, a standard subdivision, and not use, you know, the Old File Map standards. This portion that is owned by Joe, and it's this, this lot, and these lots here, would have been part of that Old File Map, but he chose to not, to include it, he didn't opt to be part of the application at the time, and the, the access for these maps in an Old File Map area, I guess, was coming from this, this portion, but since has been, you know, abandoned, and you would never be able to get to function these lots because of the wetlands.
Right.
You don't, we don't prove, grow through wetlands, so that would have been another reason, this, this access was not appropriate, so in the Old File Map, right now, he's proposing an easement that is over this person's property to access this at thirty feet wide, just an easement, not a road, and the standards for Old File Map, these are my two issues related to opening this, is that you, there's a couple standards, and I could give you the section too, one would be access, and the other one would be environmental considerations, and this is a very sensitive piece of property, there's wetlands, if you, you see the map, which I can show you.
Is the blue designating wetlands?
Generally speaking.
Okay, blue, purple, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's a map the D C generates a long time ago, and it's, it's an overlay, but it's not exact, the exacting would be getting Marty out there to flag it, and there, I think that's been done, but it just doesn't reference that on the plan, because there's, there is a wetlands line that's Marty Shay, doesn't have a state on it, I would want to double check that date, so this is his original proposal that was submitted.
Go back up there and show us the part that the town bought on that.
So that would be this Cathy's Way is purchased.
Go to the other.
The aerial?
The aerial again?
Yeah.
Okay, just let me go back to actually G I S, it's never.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is, this is the Cathy's Way that is now purchased, so there's, therefore it can't be accessed.
And what about this piece below that arrow?
This, he did own, do you still own this? I mean, I'm giving my little overview, but that's a good question for Joe, whether he owns this, but he did own it at the time of the original proposal to open this map, which was in twenty twenty, so that was, he's come to revise this application that was submitted in twenty twenty, at the time, Zoom, Sun Times, there was, there was a lot of public comments at that public hearing for this application, opposed to the application.
So the western portion, the town bought though, they bought that piece?
This portion, the north.
They bought all those lots, but more important.
They bought the road.
They bought the road, they bought all the lots that we created.
You created the road, but was the intention? And the lots? For obviously, it might be CPF standards for, for open space, right? But the road, was it your intention to give him those lots to the south access?
I don't know.
No.
I'm not, I don't know, I wasn't the party.
It's an unopened piece, you know, it's not an open file map, if anything, it should be a sending parcel because it's environmental.
But how, how's that lot different from the ones we created just north of there?
Yeah, but that was how many years ago?
I don't know.
Twenty years ago.
Mine was Oakland Farms, I know it was after the wetlands, after the wetlands law went into effect.
It was around 2004, I can, actually, hold on, I can check.
2010. Yeah, it was later than that, because that, that was, that farm, that.
Fifteen years ago.
That was proposed after I moved in.
It's been a long time.
It was filed in 2010.
Yeah, thirteen years ago.
Right, so that's about right.
Probably the thinking of the town was, oh, we don't need to buy that other piece because it's landlocked, no one will get access to it, or we'll, we'll offer the owner, you know, peanuts because they can't get in, that, that's, that's the thinking.
But did they not buy a piece?
They bought all those lots.
No, no, I'm not talking about those, I'm talking about where Joe's parcel is, what in question that we're discussing now, west of it.
Which part, wait, I'm sorry, west of this?
Put your arrow down, yeah, yeah.
This, oh, no, these are Joe's, these are Joe's properties here and I think he deeded to the town.
Yes, the town owned one of those.
Portion of this portion.
Yes, exactly.
Maybe he could tell us, but I'm done, so.
He's twitching, you can see him, he's just like, I'm not going to jump in.
Okay, Joe, I can have, I have to tell you that we have a session scheduled after this, so.
Tell me how much time I have.
You have to stand at the.
Fifteen, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay, I'm going to go with the warp speed.
You can use a table too. You can use a table too, Joe, we got the mics up on the table there.
It's really easier.
I have some maps that will be very helpful to explain the situation.
That's the piece I'm talking about, the green, the green piece of town.
Help you out here.
This one here is.
Is this the way you want them to see this, the side?
Nope, go to the other side, one of the other, that's it, okay.
He has a prelude, a beginning, a middle and an end.
That's right, and the first five minutes of my pitch is going to be a history of old file map, bring some of our newer members up to speed.
Oh, we got that, we got a whole session, we got it, we got it, yeah, we got it.
Yes.
I was taking it back to 1902.
Five minutes of off the presentation. We had a whole session, up to speed.
Eliminate the history.
Let me see what I'm talking about.
And talk about this parcel.
I wanted to thank Claire for saying such nice things about my map, but maybe, I'm going to start with anything, it's going to take a couple minutes. 1902, here this map, that's when it all started, okay? This is a map of Oceanside filed, actually filed 1904. This is a map of, of the way they divided land in 1904. They did it with a T-square. I brought along my T-square, I used to draw a lot of drafting, this is how they draw straight lines, okay? So the developer bought a 200 acre tract, he drew lines like this, then he drew lines like this, okay? He created 2,000 lots, okay, 1904. The Kowreski Airport wiped out most of the middle of this map. What we're talking about today is from the railroad south, this is the Long Island Railroad, this line right here, okay? The land in blue is the map of Oakland Farms, that's Ken Tidaldi from Quiog and his attorney, Dick Hayfully, they were before this board for a number of years in getting these lots, this old filed map approved by your board to turn it into the subdivision map that they got approved and sold off all the lots on that looks nothing at all like an old filed map, it looks like.
I'm going to ask Claire to show us what we're seeing on the screen because I need to be able to, to.
Zoom out a little bit.
Expand a little more, yeah.
The subdivision map, I'm saying what he's talking about.
Zoom out, yeah.
Okay.
This.
That's not helping.
There's a real line up and, up at the top.
I can't, I can't see that.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a real road line to the top.
Okay.
And everything to the south of that, between Peters Lane.
Can you make it larger, Claire?
Uh, sure.
That portion?
That's about it, that's the best I could do about largeness.
I mean, I appreciate the conversation about Oakland Farms, but let's not get hung up on that because that's not what you're applying for.
No, but it's very integral.
You're applying for a piece that is an old file map that, that we haven't opened, the town hasn't opened.
The old filed map of Oceanside, ninety percent of its south of the railroad became Oakland Farms. This board should have reviewed this under the old filed map regulations, but it did not. You reviewed it as described property because it was abandoned and not subject to your review under old file map rules, which you're holding me to with my application today and which you're obligated under the code to do, to review old filed maps under old filed map rules. That was not done with the Tidaldi map of the farms. My parcel, six acres shown in pink, which is the ten percent of the Oakland Farms, ten percent, Oakland Farms, ninety percent.
Where is it landed?
I'm ten percent of the Oceanside old filed map. Somehow, my ten percent got left off. This happened in nineteen, 2010, I didn't become the owner until 2013, so I come into the picture three years later.
But you purchased it knowing that it was not open?
I purchased it knowing that the planning board eliminated the access on two of my subdivision roads that go to Jeffrey Lane. The, the sixth, the old filed map had cross streets, two of them, which affect my property, gave me access to Jeffrey Lane. Jeffrey Lane is in the incorporated village of West Hampton Beach. The homes and the lots on Jeffrey Lane exceed a million and a half dollars apiece, it's a beautiful development. Coming in off of Peters Lane, they, they approached 500,000 home and lots, it's a difference night and day.
There's a house for a hundred and a half million dollars.
They're up to a million now.
The cottages on, on Peters Lane.
Are not $500,000.
Well, let's not dwell on that.
That's not what we should be discussing, we're discussing whether or not we should be opening an old file map.
Right.
So I'd like to focus on that, please.
You have opened ninety percent of this old filed map. You've, you have opened everything inside the blue. You've opened it, you created thirty-three lots, you provided for open space, you did a, an organized development, you didn't do it under the old filed map regulations because if you did, you would have provided access for my six acres, but somehow I got left off. Now, I started in 2013 with this very issue because I was very upset, I went to the town board, I came to the planning board, I said, "Where is my access? I have six acres of land on the line of West Hampton Beach, I'm only a half a mile from town, I've lost my access." I, it was offered to me as an explanation, "Don't worry, Mr. Gazzetta, we're providing access to you from Cathy's Way," which was the road that went through the Oakland Farms shown on the map right over here, okay? And the idea was that Cathy's Way was going to come down and it was going to connect into, why, with four street.
Such a controversial.
On my subdivision.
You was the tutor, right?
Now, unfortunately, there was a little chad of property.
Look at the other map, let's look this around a second.
I got it, Joe.
Ethan, you don't have to hide behind.
Thank you, Banner.
No, I can hide behind it, it's much better.
He'd prefer that.
I look good from here up, just so you know.
The planning board had provided that the Cathy's Way, which is up here, connects down and there was a little chad of property, twenty feet by, I don't know, eighty feet, that the planning board was supposed to get when they approved the map of Oakland Farms and you never got it. You didn't pursue it with Dick Hayfully.
How could we get, I don't think we own land.
No, it's probably deeded to the town.
It was supposed to be deeded to the town in connection with the approval of the Oakland Farms map and that was supposed to give me the connection to get to my six acres of land, so you didn't landlock me.
So you're saying the town landlocked you?
The town did.
And you bought a landlocked piece of property in 2013?
No, oh, oh, but they, they took away my access in 2010 over here, but this came later.
You didn't own that until 2013, correct?
Correct, but the town had provided me with access over Cathy's Way because you didn't want to landlock me, you wanted to do the right thing. But you never got that chad of land from Hayfully, I went with Jackie for three years trying to get it, he wouldn't give it, so in effect, I became landlocked, okay? So, at that point, I said, "My only alternative is to buy myself a way into my six acres," which is what I had to do and I had to give away three quarters of an acre, one of my lots, in exchange for a thirty-foot perpetual easement for all legal purposes to get out to Peters Lane. I gave away three quarters of an acre to get access, I had no choice, I was in a box, I had no way to get into my six acres of land, I'm paying taxes, I've owned it since 2013, I, I traded off the lot, I got the access. Now, I could come into the planning board with an application on an old filed map with access and I could come in with an application that will comply with every regulation in the book on old filed maps. And I, I did that by going through, I don't know how many maps I have to go through, like about six maps, I worked on it with Mr. Wilcox and Ms. Fennlin to come up with a plan.
It's over here.
It's over here.
Yeah, you're looking to get four lots.
To come up with a plan to, remember, I couldn't get the chad, I bought the way in, I gave up this lot in exchange for this way in. Now I have a way in and I still have five and a half acres of land, it's one acre zoning. So it was suggested to me that the importance of the Aspetuck Creek traveling through my property, to, to protect that creek, I've already given to the town conservation easement on the green area, it's to protect the Aspetuck Creek. And I have offered in connection with the four lots that I'm proposing to, to also give a conservation easement, all this deal is green around the edge. So when this map hopefully gets approved, the town will have obtained 69.7% of my land for free in conservation easement. I'm only asking to use thirty percent of my land and I'm asking to use it for four lots that have adequate building envelopes, setbacks, they're in compliance with every section of our code, I'm not asking for a variance of any nature. They, they comply with code. Now, I know that the neighbors over here are opposed, they don't want to see any development, period, they, they, they hate me, okay? And they hate me, we'll pass these photos down the line, because for twenty years, they've been dumping their garbage on my six acres, they've been throwing it over the fence and I cleaned it all up and I went after them, I said, "You can't dump your garbage on my land, take this, your toilets and your mattresses and your, your lawn foot to get it," they said, "We didn't do it, we didn't do it, nobody would admit to it." I said, "Oh, it jumped over the fence by itself." Well, the neighbors don't like me, that, I'm past that, I just want my, my lots, I have money invested, I have over 30,000 in engineering alone and I've been to all the departments, this is your, this is the last step for me, okay? I've been to the, the DEC, I have the, here we go, we'll pass this also, please. I, I started with the planning board because I had to abandon the streets, remember, this was an old filed map and the planning board approved the abandonment of the streets and I went through all that process, it took a couple years to get all those streets abandoned. I went to the DEC with the map, I had to twist things to make the building envelopes further away from the wetlands to be in compliance, I went to, to the town conservation board, I went to all the boards, I went to the health department, I have a health department ready to approve this, they're ready to stamp this map subject to the planning board, okay? I can put the new AI systems in for the four lots that exceed the setback requirements. You may recall, the planning board asked me to do test excavations, they wanted to determine the, the depth of groundwater, I had to go back there twice, I had to get a big machine to dig down because we didn't hit groundwater until, I think, fourteen feet, fourteen, fourteen and seven, fourteen feet, so we're high in elevation, we've got plenty of soil, I can comply with health department, I can comply with DEC, I can comply with the, the town conservation with setback, Marty Shay went out there and established the wetland line.
It doesn't have a date on it, Joe, when was that?
It doesn't have a date on it, I don't know, I don't know the exact date, but the surveyor.
It's going to probably have to be refreshed if it was 2020.
Okay, I don't know the date that he went out there, sorry. I went to the fire department in West Hampton Beach, I said, "If I create four lots with four houses, can you serve them in case of an emergency?" They sent their, their chief out there, there's a fire hydrant 496 feet away, shows on the map, right over here, he says, "Within 500 feet, we can handle it." I have a letter to that, I have letters from all the agencies, all the departments, except the planning board. Now, it's been, it's been nine years for me on this old map and I know that there's opposition from the neighbors and I understand why they're opposed, they don't want to see any development, they don't want to buy it, but they don't want to see it developed. And Madam Chairman, I know that you think that I should pursue development rights for this property and I will tell you that I have already, in the West Hampton Beach School District, I have fourteen development rights and I've had some of them for ten years and I can't use them because there's no old filed maps in the West Hampton Beach School District that need development rights because they're all on the Pine Barrens Court, there's two maps that need it, there's only, I have two or three lots out of the whole West Hampton area, so I, I have fourteen rights, I don't need any more rights. You know, you've been very gracious in allowing me to use part of those rights for South Hampton, or half, to try to accommodate for this situation where I have these rights and I have no place to use them, okay? Now, you know, I'm, I'm a developer, I'm a user and I'm not opposed to having community preservation by my property. I've, I've been working with them for seven years, okay? Now, they made a $300,000 offer for my six acres, they insulted me with that, I was insulted, okay? And I'm not, I'm not closing the door because I've, I've been writing and appealing and I'm working on them even today because if they. and I'm working on them even today, because if they make me a reasonable offer, I'll accept it. You know, I'm a business person. I know that these lots are valuable lots, because they're in West Hampton Beach School District, they're an acre, they back up to a creek, they've got beautiful preserved land all around them. I want to get the value of my land. If they want to buy my land, they can buy it, I want fair market value. And I'm not taking three hundred thousand dollars to get it, I'm gonna do, that's out of the question.
What's fair market value?
Five hundred thousand a lot.
So two million.
Less the road improvements.
They have an appraiser who said it's worth three hundred thousand.
I mean, that's the, the CPF law says that you have to use fair market value.
Now he's got access.
Now he's got an easement over somebody's forty thousand square foot piece of property.
Property.
It's an easement. It's an easement. Yes.
People have to go to zone.
Well, no.
Oh, no, maybe.
I don't know.
I've seen it before, I have to think about that.
But a recent appraisal hasn't been done.
But is this still an old filed map, or is this described?
It's an old filed map with no access.
But isn't it more like a subject, like Oakland Farms was an old filed map, but they abandoned all the lots?
He's got no frontage on the road. You would use the subdivision standards, too, it's not only old filed map, it actually talks to subdivision standards. Would you subdivide a piece that has no frontage with an easement? No, you have to have frontage.
The answer to that question, Claire, as I explained to you during the week-
He took an easement, he did an easement over somebody's private piece of property. He doesn't have fee title to that piece of property, and it makes that property smaller. And you put a road next to somebody's property?
Claire, I've showed you this week, I have three examples where the planning board has approved divisions-
You have not submitted that, for the record, I'd love to look at it, Joe.
Did we have a meeting and I showed you these maps?
And I said, "Submit it," and you did not.
Okay, well, I'm sending it to the board today-
Perfect.
That there are three examples that I found in fifteen minutes of my search, where you have approved division of property of four lots on easements, okay?
In old file maps?
Uh, probably described.
No.
No, described.
So it's not apples to apples?
No wetlands involved.
No wetlands, no, it's not the same.
And I'm just, I'm trying to get a feel from the board. I'm saying the code, he's making his pitch for an old filed map to be opened. It's been since 2020 at the hearing, so if you're inclined to consider this, I would recommend a minimum reopening, have another hearing, and do the due process of the referrals again, again, three years, wetlands line updated. Let's get the information and consider it. I just don't know how the board wants to go on this one. Because there's no timeframes, unfortunately, and Joe's been waiting patiently, but-
Has an updated appraisal been done? Because it looked like the offer of three hundred thousand was in 2015, right?
I spoke with Jackie Fennlin, I said, "What, what's going on?" She says, "I pitched it to the town board." She said, "You know, you're preserving seventy percent of the property for free." She says, "Our incentive is diminished to purchase."
So when did you speak with them last? When did you approach CPF last?
Uh, two weeks ago. I spoke to Jackie in the hall two hours ago.
Did you submit a letter requesting them to consider your property for acquisition?
I did, I supported your file.
I mean, it is in there, in March.
May, March?
But the fact that the town bought a strip of single and separate lots directly north of here is-
They should be able to buy this.
Yep.
They can, if they pay me the fair price.
Yeah, but we can't.
We're out of buy.
Well, but-
And I mean, this is from 2015, it's eight years ago. So this is of no value in today's world with the value of land.
Because 2015, that was probably a good value in 2015, but I knew, living four miles from here, there were lots on Carwin Lane that selling for six hundred thousand dollars or more per lot right now. Now, those are properly developed, full access, everything else.
Well, I have a feeling that community preservation is not going to move on this unless, number one, they get some kind of action from the planning board showing that I have lots.
You don't, well, we don't know that you have lots at this point. Because we have not made, we don't under, I personally don't totally understand the difference between some of the things you were saying, Claire, about an easement and not having road frontage, those rules, that law. So I'm not in a position to say anything beyond that, I heard you.
Okay, well, I can wait, I waited nine years.
So I suggest that people read the old filed map code, which-
I can say the family, not really old filed map.
Which Claire is referencing, the old filed map regs. And two of the ingredients in it are access and environmental. In other words, if a piece is environmental, there are others, but if a piece is environmental, it becomes a sending parcel, so.
What if he abandoned that map and then just, this becomes a described, like Oakland Farms?
I don't think you can do that, you can't turn an old filed map into a described map.
Oakland Farms?
Oakland Farms was very controversial, let me tell you.
But that's what you did. That's how Oakland Farms did, they abandoned their entire, the underlying old filed map. Why, have you thought of that, just abandoning?
But the town, I mean, you have to go through the town for it.
I thought that the code specifically said that once you're an old filed map, you're always an old filed map, you can't get out of it. Okay, you're subject to the regulations, and I've worked within the regulations.
How did Oakland Farms get out of it?
Well, you don't know the history of it.
Hayfully abandoned it and the board approved it.
How can you not, how can you prevent someone from, you could abandon a map. You wipe out the lot lines and the roads and it's one big parcel.
It wiped out my access to Jeffrey Lane, which if I had two lots on Jeffrey Lane, I'd be happier than four lots off Peters Lane.
You can't get across there because you can't get across wetlands.
You can't get through the wetlands.
But there was enough land that I had, the wetlands is in here, here's the creek. I had enough land in here where I could have gotten at least a lot out of it.
I don't think so.
I think it's possible, okay? And the town took that away from me.
I know you were supposed to get access from, I remember that, you were supposed to get access-
This way.
The north.
And the town took that away from me.
The town was, there's, I'm sure documentation, that the town was supposed to do that, it did not do it?
Well, they provided, provided the road, and the chad, yeah.
And the road's now CPF land.
Right, and I argued with CPF, I said, "Let me use the road, can't touch it."
No, you can't.
Purchased with CPF money, you can't cut down a tree.
No.
Finished.
That we know.
I'd like to see a response to your March letter from CPF, so that we could consider it in light of you saying, like, "I can't get the money that I want from it." We don't have the answer to that yet, so.
Well, here's a question, I was on the CPS and CPF advice.
No, the most recent, twenty-five three letters.
We would examine these things based on the buildable lots. Is CPF looking at this as buildable lots or one chunk of land?
Partly a six acres.
The six acre property.
Do you have a copy of that letter that you've submitted to us, Claire?
Isn't it in the back of that packet?
It's on the back of the packet.
The newest one, the newest letter?
There's a March twenty twenty-three letter in the back of that packet that's asking for them to consider buying your parcels, correct?
I tried to sell.
Are they parcels or parcels?
No, it just-
If they want to buy it as one, I don't want to recognize the lots.
I think that if the board, the planning board, is thinking that, "You don't let me do anything as far as dividing my property, and you leave me landlocked, and you follow your planner's advice that I don't, even though I gave up an acre, three quarters of an acre lot to get access, it doesn't count." Maybe CPF is going to say, "You know what? We got seventy percent of the land from Gaza for free, we're going to offer them some peanuts for the thirty percent left."
The conversation can't go any further until you get a response from CPF. So I'd say, "Come back to us when you have an official response to your asking them officially to put an appraisal together and make an offer." Because you only have an offer from 2015.
We can't incorporate hypothetical open space purchases in our decision, in our planning.
Right.
I mean, we shouldn't even be having that.
Thank you.
You know, but Joe brought it up and it's a valid conversation.
It was old.
So, yeah, you have the, come, you open that, and just for the record, like, you know.
Claire, has it been determined that that is the easement?
I think he has a valid. Bottom line, he's got valid.
Joe has conformed lots to that easement?
He has conformed lots, but he has no access to an easement.
It's just that.
Help me.
I haven't seen the announcement.
You haven't seen the easement?
I will come back to the same with that.
Listen, you're getting a presentation from Joe.
However, having said that, I'm not going to tell you.
You got the Dennis's bit?
There's not, it's a matter of whether or not this board as a house wants to recognize the easement as access, sufficient as to fulfill the requirements in this situation of old filed map. You do have precedent where you have-
I think there's too many conversations happening.
Yeah, hold on.
We're supposed to be in a public session.
It's not an old filed map.
Yeah, it's gone.
Point out where Oakland Farms is on that map, Joe.
I have the easement, by the way, and I really did submit it to you.
I'm not saying that you didn't, I'm just saying I don't remember reviewing it.
Okay, we have very few minutes.
Will you open my time, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I asked a question to counsel, and that was important.
Is this Phil Shapiro, is this the thing? Oh, that's the easement, okay, yeah, he did submit it. I did not run the meetings out of it. But what I'm saying is, it's a question of whether or not this board as a policy wants to accept an easement as an access, a sufficient access for purposes of this subdivision in an old filed map. You do have precedent where you have used easements as access. We have one currently before the board now in another situation. Not in the old filed map, it's up to you, but that's a policy you need to consider.
So CPF-
It's actually in the code, you know.
No, it's not in the-
Access is in the code.
Access is in the code, but you have deemed access in other situations sufficiently satisfied by an easement. So, I'm not saying in an old filed map, but you have done it in other subdivision cases.
But that's apples and oranges.
But that's for this board, I just can only tell you what-
So CPF discussion aside, because I think it's inappropriate for this board anyhow.
It's completely inappropriate, because all this board would be doing would be upping the price.
Correct, correct. So what is the process for first establishing the easement as access, and then moving forward with an application of a subdivision of land? Where are we at in that process?
Have you submitted a subdivision application?
No, this is an old filed map application.
Right, have you submitted the application with the-
Yes, that was done three years ago.
To open this map, to open this?
Yes.
To subdivide this, okay. So then it's just a question of whether or not, have you deemed it complete?
No.
Okay, I'll just tell you again where we're at. There was a public hearing, you've had several meetings at the end of 2020, and then it's been radio silence since then.
Okay, so it was deemed complete at one point, but it did go-
Not deemed complete, but adequate for a public hearing for-
Okay, was one of the issues that he didn't have access?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the issue?
Now he's back, I wasn't here then, so, so now he's back, and he has said, "This is what I have secured for access, is this good enough?" That's what you need to decide.
Can I ask two questions?
No, but I think there's another issue here, an environmental issue.
Well, that's a separate issue.
But it's part of the old filed map regs.
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
You were saying that, from your spiel, that that entire Ocean Park old filed map was abandoned when it did Oakland Farms?
Yeah, they abandoned-
So did they abandon this section of property, did you own it?
No.
They did not?
They abandoned the yellow, they abandoned ninety percent of the map. Ten percent of the map, they left off.
So this still really is truly still old filed map, not?
Oh, yes, this, my land is old filed map, that's why I'm conceding.
So the second question I have for you, when you got your easement, if you were given an acre of land, why did you not take described property instead of an easement?
Because the owner of the property, he had about one acre of land, it's one acre zoning. And to cut a strip off of his land would have reduced it below an acre.
And you couldn't make the old filed map part of his property?
I would have rendered his parcel nonconforming.
So he couldn't?
No, I told you, if you were giving him the acre, you couldn't amend that.
Ask him the same question, yeah.
And the most I could get was thirty foot. I had to give up the three quarters of an acre lot to get the thirty, believe me. The Nukewitzes were very difficult people to negotiate with to get this easement, which I had submitted. And it took me years to negotiate, that's why there was a gap in coming back to your board. Because I lost the access going out to Jeffrey Lane, I lost the access going up to Kathy's Way. I was forced to give up a lot for thirty feet easement. It's a thorough easement, it covers everything, utilities, access, and I submitted this to the fire department, they said it was adequate for the fire trucks.
That's the main thing, can we construct suitable access that includes curbing, drainage, underground utilities, the whole nine yards?
The whole thing, and I have town engineer, I forgot to tell you that, I have-
Joe, he's going to allow you to put drainage in that easement?
Yes.
And pave it?
Yes.
And curbing?
If necessary.
If necessary.
If necessary.
So then the issue of environmental suitability is still another issue pending of what you want to do, and that in light of what that access will be?
Well, Claire, could you go to the aerial again and show us the eight lots that we created just north of there, part of Oakland Farms? So how are these properties different from the eight that we declared, we created north of that?
Because the town woke up and bought the property, so environmental.
The weather, it's getting environmental, she goes south.
Those houses could have been built on, needed a willing seller.
But they, they didn't, and the town bought it, so.
The town bought it.
But we can't go back and pin a pie on what-
But we created building lots, we created building lots.
Not open space lots, those are, could you scroll a little bit so we can see them all?
We created building lots in a cul-de-sac, building lots.
So what is, so what do you think?
A point, how can we create seven building lots in the cul-de-sac directly north of here that turn around and say, "Well, we can't create these lots because they're environmentally sensitive"?
Because it was a very different planning board then, that's why. It was a very contro, Oakland Farms was very controversial.
A couple of things happened that were a mistake. And the mistake was, you took an old filed map, and you abandoned ninety percent of it, where the law says you have to look at the entire map. And yet, the planning board at the time failed to do that, and that was a big mistake.
And that's when Joe should have made his-
Yeah.
I wasn't the owner, but we provided access, we provided access to this piece.
We didn't include these lots, or you didn't plan for these lots. These could have been sending parcels. You did not plan for these lots at the time, and that was a mistake. There's a couple of things going on here. Whether, I just don't know, again, a feel for the board, I think there needs to be, it's a new map from 2020. Let's get it back out there for the public hearing, do formal referrals, and then the board will have to consider whether to open the map based on the standards. Subdivision standards, general standards, and old filed maps.
I'd also like to hear formally from CPF. I see there's a letter from March. It's interesting that there's a, one word that seems to be whited out and handwritten in interest, whether the CPF would be interested.
Boy, we really have to keep that separate.
We really have to create a firewall, there needs to be a firewall because it's not the CPF.
It just doesn't, they impact each other in a way that's not-
I understand, but he submitted the document, okay, so we read it.
You should have painted it back there.
I just did.
So, Claire?
Have you read them?
Well, he gave them to me the way he-
I'm looking for the letter, the word.
But we can't do anything here that would try and sway that one way or the other.
So I understand what you're saying, but Mr. Gaza is coming to us saying, "The CPF is not offering me enough money for my property, and that's why I'm before you to open this map." So, like, if we don't know-
It doesn't matter why he's here, I don't know why he's here. You're asking us for something, if we take that in consideration. So then you're going to say, "All right, I feel bad for you, they're not offering up, let me give you a subdivision, and then they'll offer you more money." Like, anything we do, I'm not saying we would ever do that, I'm just saying, anything we do then, if that becomes an issue, that's what it's going to look like.
But Christine, that's what we're hearing from Mr. Gaza.
Mr. Gaza is giving you more information than you need.
Claire, what is your recommendation in terms of moving forward to the planning board?
I think it's always helpful to, A, get the public input, and B, get the proper referrals on, and then you have all the information to make your decision at the end of the day.
In the interest of procedure and protocol, that would be the next logical move, right?
Yes, so Joe's submitting legible letters.
Typed, not handwritten.
Typed, that have white lines.
It's all typed except for one word, which I thought was very strange.
You haven't seen his handwritten pages?
I changed the word, my daughter didn't type it, I had to write it in.
And plans that we could refer, so ten sets of plans, this is his new proposal, outline the easement.
I also need the easement, as I told you, I'm still waiting for a signature notarized.
I've got the opinion letter, but I need that.
So this will be up for completeness next, or it goes straight to the public hearing?
Schedule a public hearing, that's, I suggest we get that information in, schedule a public hearing.
A pre-application public hearing, I mean, how does it, what does it call?
It just says when you open an old filed map that you have a public hearing.
We had a public hearing, I don't want to deal with those neighbors again, those neighbors that dumped all over my property, I hate them.
You are absolutely having a public hearing.
Joe, you can't, all right. Joe, you can't, all right, let's not say we hate them because they're gonna come in here, and that's not a good way to start. So they're gonna want a public hearing, obviously. They're gonna want that that was-
They had it.
Twenty twenty. Did you have the easement at the time, Joe?
No, I did not.
Okay, so here we are. We're gonna have a public hearing.
Joe, I'm a-
If you run away from your opposition, you're gonna have to deal with them, and this board's gonna have to deal with them. It's not something that they can do. It's not transparent.
And we have opposition from neighbors to many, many applications, not just here.
A lot of us are relatively new. We weren't here when this first came up. But I'm not speaking for the rest of the board members. I am speaking for this board member. Without procedure, protocol, method, I just see chaos. And then, like, that's where mistakes are made, is we have to do this correctly.
I thought we did it. I really did.
Well-
I had the public hearing. I fought off all these people.
Well, again, not for the rest of the board members, for this board member. I'd like to, I'd like to see the procedure done properly.
The other answer would be, "No, we're not considering it, so do you wanna try or not?"
Yes, I wanna try.
I think the map is very different because you know of access, right? You know, it's a very different map because you know of access previous, you do. And I think that by itself was, you know.
The access is a sticking point for me because this map had access. And it was taken from me, from the map, twice by the town. And it wasn't right.
So you could have challenged it when it happened. You should have challenged it yet. You didn't know that you bought it knowing that.
I bought it knowing the first access, but not the second. When it was community preservation. Oh, I fought community pres- I went, I says, "Wait a minute. Where's Kathy's Way? What are you doing?"
So what you're asking for today, we're actually prepared to give you, which is to consider opening this back up with a public hearing, so.
But we need to go through the full process again.
Yeah. I think that-
I'm not charging you.
You should be happy.
See, Joe, Claire, she's not gonna charge you.
Yes, we'll go through it again, and we'll have those angry neighbors here again, you know.
Their anger, their anger is uncontrollable, but it's still process, 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 right? So we look at everything, open eyes, open ears.
And I'm thankful that we're gonna consider, consider this after the lengthy times. So, Claire, what's our next?
I'm gonna wait for his plan.
Oh, yes, to submit it.
I need him to pay a fine. And then I'm going to bring it back on to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for the time. Thank you.
So there's no action?
So that was way more than fifteen minutes.
I know.
There's no action on this?